Everything's ready and the, yes, and it looks like the waiting room is just about clear. So.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you're good.
All right. We're going to go ahead and call the September 1st, 2020 Board of Supervisors Meeting for Lake County to order. As tradition, we'll go ahead and do a moment of silence. And I know we do have a dedication from Supervisor Crandall.
Yes. And so I'd like to give this moment of silence dedicated to Hanson McLeod Jr. He was taken from us at the age of 29. He's a father. He leaves behind his children and his beloved family. He embraced his Native American culture and was very skilled in the art of regalia making. Indian country has lost a very valuable resource.
Supervisor Crandall, would you please lead us in pledge allegiance?
Yes. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just for all.
Thank you. Okay, item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. I don't think we have any, but I wasn't asked. Do we have any extra agenda items?
None that have come to my attention, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Number five, approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. Are there any items that would like to be pulled from the board? We didn't receive any and we'll see none. All right. Thank you. Any, let's go to the public. Any items from the consent agenda can be pulled by anyone from the public? Do we have anyone who would like to pull any items from the consent agenda today? Jake, can you just open the room?
Yes, I will open up the room. All right. I've sent out an unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Jake, go ahead and close the room. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to pull an item?
There are none in the public that wish to pull an item.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and close public comment at this point and we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 5.1 through, I believe, 5.20. Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Crandall. Can you do a roll call vote, please draw a number?
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
I don't think I heard Supervisor Brown.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to our 9:01 a.m. public input. Didn't see any public input filled out at this point, but I will go ahead and see if there's anyone in chambers that would like to do public input on any item that is not appearing on the agenda.
Is there any public input for any items that are not on the agenda today? Go ahead and please stand and make your comment. You have three minutes.
And if you would, if you haven't filled out a form, if you'd go to the clerk of the board, cross your hand, get a form filled out.
I did fill out a form.
The public input?
Yeah.
It's in a. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is in response to your.
And if you can start with your name, please.
Oh, yes, of course. This is Milos Lubner from Calseville. And I just found out the day last night that the Board of Supervisors approved the ordinance, which is basically, in my opinion, setting us way back where there is nothing happening here, that we had basically victimless six months and that regarding the COVID, so-called COVID-19. And I was unable to provide a copy of, copy of opinions and understanding of numerous well-known specialists. And also there are people all over the world who are doing, who are protesting to, against the situation as we have it now. In opinion of many people, there is no COVID-19. It's a response to human body and a mind and a soul in sense of being overwhelmed by vibrational problems which are caused by five billion cell phones we are, which are in use on this planet and hundreds of other sources of disturbances which destroy the other lives, like the bees are 70% dead already, and we are suffering from it as well. So this is not a small thing. You know, that's one of the things. We have also, people are living in areas where the air is loaded with chemicals. And that's why we are in Lake County miraculously, you know, we have no COVID-19. Maybe we were luck, you know, we were, somebody was looking for COVID-19 cases here with great expectations. But I don't think if we took it apart, analyzed it one by one, I don't think there was nothing because we have clean air and people have, of course, also their own personal problems which are causing also this kind of a, anyways, just to not to run out of time, I'm going to bring to every, all the people in the board, a several documents, but I have to make copies of them because it's explained to, explained very clearly. Maybe I can just read one once, one sentence, which is coronavirus is invisible phantom, so-called virus, therefore not contagious slash infectious, making vaccinations totally useless and contributing factor for chemical and biological poisoning. This is Dr. Robert O. Young. And there is 20 pages of analysis of this situation. They are looking at what's called exasomas, which is similar to, looks like virus, but it isn't virus. And they are just hoping that they will finally find virus, but they never will because it doesn't exist. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to our, is there any more public input? I think that's all we had filled out.
I just looked up and I do not see anyone else wishing to make a public comment.
Okay, thank you. And we didn't have any other forms or anything filled out at this point. So at this time, we're going to go and close public input. And we are going to move to our 6.2 item, our 9:02 a.m. consideration of update on COVID-19. Dr. Pace?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Board. This is the weekly COVID update. And I'm Gary Pace, the Public Health Officer. And so in Lake County now, we have a total, we've had a total of 345 cases. There are 36 that are active at this point, two currently hospitalized, one is in county, one is out of county. And unfortunately, last week, we had a fourth death that was COVID-related. So the, in California, just for some context, last month was the worst month in terms of the number of deaths. There were over 3,700 deaths that were COVID-related in August. But it's, the number of cases seems to be decreasing now and the number of hospitalizations as well. So we're hoping that there's some improvement there. In Sonoma County, they're continuing to have a significant outbreak. And in fact, there's a new development in that the Santa Rosa Memorial Hospital has an outbreak amongst their staff. They've got something like 17 staff that are positive now and, and which is a kind of a problem. So in our county, what we're seeing is, there's, it's popping up in different places around the county. Certainly, the social gatherings seem to be the main source of where the spread is once we start tracking it back. Weddings, funerals, parties with people outside of the household. But we are seeing some spread within some of the businesses as well now. We haven't tracked it to any of the public getting it from a person in the business, but within some of the food vendors and stores, there's been some spread within amongst the staff. Usually, it seems like it's folks that are less committed to the masking. There is a outbreak in one of the nursing facilities now, which is a, is a concern. There's a couple of staff members and some of the residents that have tested positive. And this, so this gets the state involved. We've been talking with the state. There's, the facility is doing a great job of trying to isolate people and make sure the staff is doing proper protection, et cetera. But this is where we have seen in other parts of the state problems with significant spread and people dying. There are, there's also been a outbreak in a grouping of out of county contractors that came in to do some work in the county. And almost somewhere between a third and a half of this group tested positive. Again, the contractor has, has been doing a good job and sent folks to isolation. We've been in contact with the other counties. And so everything's being done properly. But, you know, each of these that comes up, there's a risk of significant spread and also a risk of impact on our numbers in the, which has, you know, other implications around businesses, et cetera. One thing I just want to mention is we have, we are putting together information for businesses if they get a positive case amongst their staff. So we've been spending a fair amount of time with some of the business owners or managers about, okay, if you have a positive case, then how do you track within the other staff? How do you talk with the public? Disinfection of the business? Do you need to close? Things like that. And we've had a really great cooperation with the business community, but we're trying to sort of streamline it and get a packet together that should be on the website within a day or two. And, but people can also call and ask for it if they want. And we're happy to work with the business owners and the managers about how to keep the public safe and keep the staff as safe as possible. So the, big news came out last week in terms of the way the state is managing this whole watch list kind of issue. They basically have evolved into a new, a new format that started yesterday, went into effect yesterday. They basically had started talking about it a little bit by Thursday afternoon, giving some information out, but we didn't have a whole lot of information. Friday, they announced it in a big press conference and then yesterday it began. So what they've moved to now is a four-tiered system where the top tier, the most restrictive tier is tier one, or they call it purple. And that's basically the same as what the watch list was before. And then there are three other tiers that are basically breaking out the, being off the watch list and having different levels. And the idea is, is that counties, the idea was to have, come up with a long-term plan for the next six to 12 months for businesses to be able to navigate through this period of opening up the faucet a little bit more when things are good and then closing it down when things are not so good. The main focus is on businesses and indoor versus outdoor services. So one obvious example is the restaurants. So when you're in purple or tier one, the most restrictive, there are no indoor dining that's available. In tier two, which is the red zone, which is what we're in, that's, you can have 25% of capacity of indoor dining at the restaurant. At tier three, orange, you can have 50%. At tier four, I think it's 75 or maybe it's 100%. I'm not sure. I haven't looked at that one yet. But, and they go through different, different business sectors and look at this. So one thing people can do is go into, it's covid19@ca.gov. And you can go on, there's a website there and you can put in the county and you can put in the business sector and it'll show you what's open. So it's a good way to, to do that. So it's, it's the COVID-19 webpage for the state. And so they're, what they're doing is they're looking at two main data points. One is, is the number of new cases. And they have a certain way that they're figuring it out, but they're looking at case numbers, new case numbers. And then the second thing they're looking at is the test positivity rate. And so depending on those two data points, over the previous two weeks, they determine where, which, which tier you're in. And we were in tier, the red tier, tier two, which is the second most restrictive one. So we're kind of right at the border to going on the watch list. So it's just kind of where we've been now for four to six weeks, I think. And so we are now able to open restaurants to indoor dining up to 25%. Another thing that changed was movie theaters are able to open with indoor movies up to 25% capacity. And those were the main changes. The, in the purple zone, in the most closed zone, they did decide to, that they would open up hair salons and barbers. So those are open everywhere now. They felt that there was enough evidence that there was not transmission there that they could do that. So this is, and then once you're in a tier, you have to be there for three weeks. And, and the last two weeks of it, if you move to a different, the data puts you in a different tier, after two weeks in the new data point, you can move to the next one. So it's, it's basically trying to slow down the movement. This is part of the governor's attempt to respond to the criticism that he had previously that he opened too fast and that that's what caused some of the surges. So we're in the red tier. We're in the red zone. And I think that's probably congruent with what we've been seeing in the county. We have some openness now. And if, but we're also seeing some, some outbreak kind of situations going on. And so I think this is probably just about right. If things get better, if we start seeing less case transmission, then we would, and it held for a couple of weeks, we'd be able to move to the next tier and open things up a little bit more. If you, there's a fair amount of discussion around the data that we can have if you want. I'm not sure if people are going to be that interested in that, but I'm happy to do that if you want. And Sarah, our epidemiologist, is, is online for another hour or so, so she can help answer some questions if those come up. But if we try to, you know, it's pretty easy to argue with the state about some of the data or argue with some of this, but I think it's, it's a fairly reasonable approach to trying to localize some of the response so that, you know, we're not in the same boat as LA and we can, if we can get things under control in the way that meets these data points, then we can kind of loosen up a little bit more. And after three more weeks, we can loosen up a little bit more. And if things get worse, if there's spot outbreaks around the state, those places have to close down more, but not everybody has to. So, I mean, I think it's a reasonable attempt to try to do this. And there's certainly going to be, we're going to be quibbling and pushing around some of the things. There is, we are meeting, going to be meeting with some of the people at the state level to try to understand exactly where they're getting their data because some of our calculations are a bit different from theirs. But, you know, overall, I think it's, it's appropriate where we're at. The, so to talk about our response to COVID at this point, the, we are seeing a little bit of discrepancy between the data, between the state and us. And like I said, we're going to be working on that. The new Epi curve is up on the portal, which is a good curve to see how we're doing in terms of new cases. I think we're going to adjust that. We've been doing it Monday to Sunday, which is a normal week, but because of the way the state's going to be calculating these, these case rates, they're going to be starting Wednesday morning and going to Tuesday night. So we're going to probably adjust that a little bit in the coming days so that we can line up completely with the state. The, so I think, but overall, I think the data part is good. And we're, we're basically just trying to make some adjustments now because the state has shifted some of the specific data points that they're looking at. In terms of testing, the Verily site is back and working now. They had closed for a couple of days because of the air quality, but they've been back up. And we're working on a long-range plan. It looks like the contract now goes through September and the state's working on a, on another sort of contract statewide for testing facilities. We're not sure exactly what that's going to look like. They are making some motions that they may not be as interested in setting up these mobile sites the way we've had it around our county, which is really helpful for the rural counties, but we'll see how that goes. We are having some discussions with the schools about are there ways that we can support them in getting their teachers and staff tested so that they can get the, schools back open again if that's a barrier for them. In terms of the contact tracing, we're kind of working with that. That seems to be going well. We're getting some state workers that help with that. The housing piece is, the SSTU has three people in it right now, which is, this is the, the housing through a hotel and with food and other services for people that are, that are testing positive or need to quarantine because they're close contact, but they don't have a good housing situation to do that. And so that's been going fine. That worked well during the, during the evacuations as well. Juvenile Hall, I went out there yesterday to see what was going on there. And I know Supervisor Scott's been involved with that and Todd with behavioral health. And it's, it's very, very good what's happening out there. They have, they've had somewhere between 20 and 30 people regularly. It's a, basically a COVID site where they're keeping these folks in and trying to keep them off the streets during this COVID outbreak. One of the things is, is their funding, I believe, ends the end of September. So it's, seems like that's going to need some, you know, probably be working on that in the next couple of days to see what's going on with that because I don't exactly understand that. But it's, they're, it's, it's very good what's happening out there. And I think the Elijah House has been a really good partner with this. So the hospital situation has been good. So the surge planning is stable. The, you know, they, we were definitely stretched a little bit with, during the fires because St. Helena Adventist was closed and they had to evacuate all their folks. And so then the Adventist Hospital in Clear Lake had to transport much further than they usually do. We got, to get an ambulance strike team up to help with that. And that was very successful. So appreciate Chief Cepeda bringing that to our attention and making that all work well. And they are, St. Helena is now back open and Adventist is, is accepting, you know, normal admissions and everything. And so that's moving along fine. The sheltering during the fire was definitely a more challenging because of the COVID. But I think with the, it, it worked really pretty well. There were not huge numbers. So I think maybe 40 people was the most at one point. And they mainly were, went through this TEP, this temporary evacuation point where people got screened and sort of triaged to different levels, either, you know, general population where they could go to a regular congregate shelter, vulnerable population where it was unsafe for them to be in a congregate shelter, symptomatic for COVID. And they, they, we didn't want them mixing with everybody else or with the vulnerable people or the COVID positive folks. And so we, it, it worked really well, kind of separating these folks out and getting them to different places. And fortunately, we had enough hotel rooms available. We did have to go, Red Cross helped with going all the way to Williams for some of the hotels when these ones got filled up. But people were able to, to shelter safely without significant COVID spreads. So very appreciative of all the coordination and planning that went into all that. So that basically the, the last part is this long-term business and social activity sort of idea. And we talked about the four tiers, you know, and this is sort of the, the state's way of trying to put a new planning matrix over it and that will allow the different counties to adjust as needed. And, you know, there's going to be some tinkering here. It was a very quick rollout. And so we'll probably be working with some of that. It doesn't really address very well some of the, the places where we're seeing most of the issues, which is the social gatherings and, and also the masking compliance. But, you know, this is, this is an ongoing discussion that we've been having and we're working with all that as best we can. The schools are basically the same situation as before. They are allowed to open from the state point of view. And each district is working on this in the way, putting their plans together in the way that they feel as safest and the best way to serve their kids and, and the staff and the teachers. So overall, we're, we're in this new situation. A few more things we're able to open yesterday. If anybody has questions about it, they can contact us at our, at the MOOC line that's there still. We're still there Monday through Friday, eight to five. Or, but the, you know, we are basically totally in line with the state orders at this point. And so people can go on the state website and there's, there's pretty good information there. That's, almost all of it's correct as best I can tell. So I think that's it for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. All right. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Scott?
Just a comment on the Elijah House. I believe we have a 15-week contract with them, which Todd will just have to renew at the end of September if we want to continue to move forward. I think funding was for 15 weeks. So you're aware of that. So hopefully we, we will do that and keep those, those people in place.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you very much for that report. I wanted to ask, because there was something that I saw on the website when I looked at it on Friday and heard the governor's speech as well as through the CSAC meeting. There was something about gyms that might have extra restrictions by being in the more moderate section. And I think it's now it's lower to only 10% of the gyms can be used. Is that correct? Or has that changed? Because it looks like some things changed between Friday and today.
As far as I know, that you're, you're correct. That was something that was picked up that seemed a little strange. So as far as I know, that has not changed. So as far as I know, that the gyms and indoor exercise sort of facilities are limited to 10% capacity at this point, indoor capacity.
Okay. I just wanted to check in on that.
There's been a lot of pushback about that. So if, if it's not on, so if that's not on the website now, I'll, I'll have to look into that. Or maybe I'll ask somebody to look at it while we're here.
Yeah, it looks to say now gyms and fitness max 25% capacity. So it just, I think everything was set at 10% when it originally came out. And it looks like everything has kind of moved over to a different percentage, which is good. But I also need to check in and find out what's the difference between what it was before and what it's being asked of now. Because it looks like the majority of things, especially restaurants and whatnot, are being allowed to start now their indoor process, which before that was cut off. Does that mean gyms are being allowed more the same or being restricted some? So I'll have to check in with some of the owners of gyms to see what's going on with that. I did want to mention data. I appreciate that you have been working to obtain the correct data. And I know that I've been a bit of pain in the butt a little bit by asking for that data. But I think that at the bottom of this, ah, I can't find it anymore. At the bottom of the page of the new tiered program that the state has set up, it talks about county adjudication, meaning we have, they, they are, they are very verbally saying to us in writing that we have the right to dispute what the state's numbers are if we feel that they are different. And I think that us having that number is going to put us in a better position than just waiting for the state. So I appreciate you working on those. And I hope that we can get to a point where we can say, yes, these are our numbers 100%. And all it does is change the denominator. I don't think it's going to change it enormously, but at least it'll make it so that we know that it's accurate or at least as close to accurate as we can get. So I do appreciate that. I saw also the, again, we talked a little bit about the new curve that's on the county website and the Epi curve. And correct me if I'm wrong, but we obviously, the, the huge grow of a number of cases right around late June. And then from what I see, even though it's kind of up, down, up, down, up, down, we're seeing a trend of a slow decrease, a slow decline. If we actually drew a curve on this, it would look like we are slowly reducing in the number of cases on a weekly basis. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that's, that's, that's what we're seeing.
Okay, okay. And, and just real quick for clarification on the Epi curve. And, and just real quick for clarification on the Epi curve, uh, it's weird to me that it shows such a large number on March 30th, when our first case was April 5th. Is that because the Epi curve is based on when the test was done and not when the test results came in?
Let me look.
That, that's my only logic that I can put to it. I just wanted to check in.
There shouldn't be a big bump in the beginning, so.
Yeah, cause it shows like four and then it drops down for April 6th, for the week of April 6th. And I know that April 5th was our first case, but if it took two weeks to get the results, then I can understand why there's so many.
We didn't have four cases. I, I'm not sure. We'll have to check on that. Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. Just wanted to question that.
I wanted to just mention about the adjudication, adjudication thing. Uh, yeah, they do have a, a setup. I'm not sure how responsive they'll be. They've not been particularly good about responding to that stuff, but we're gonna, we're, one thing we're gonna do is find out exactly how they're drawing out their data. Because part of, and that's one of the beauties of having Sarah, and maybe we'll call her in to just answer a couple of these from her perspective too. But, um, the other thing is, is that, you know, most of the counties are finding a discrepancy between the state data and their data. And many of these counties have several epidemiologists on. This is all they do all day long is kind of crunch the numbers and sort of try to work with them. And, um, so, you know, this is just an ongoing discussion all around. And, uh, but now we've got a good team that's working on this and with Sarah helping us, helping guide it, we'll be able to at least streamline the approach and, and get the best use of the numbers and, um, and work with it by there. I don't know. Sarah, do you have anything you want to add to this since I think you're out there? Yeah.
Good morning, Sarah. You're still on mute.
Jake, if you'd allow her to unmute.
Yeah, I, I sent her a mute request.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hi. Um, to, to address the question about the Epi curve, so that's starting, uh, that Monday, March 3rd, um, and it's calculated based on episode date. So that's when, that's the earliest known. So I'm looking back at the file and we had one case of an episode date of March 30th. Um, so it's the cumulative for that seven-day period as reported through Cal Ready with the episode date. Um, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
But Sarah, his point is, is that, I mean, it looks like it's four on the curve.
Yeah, I'm looking at the file. I'm seeing a case with an episode date of March 30th. And then I'm seeing two cases with an April 1st and a case with an April 4th episode date.
So I think we might just want to recheck that first one, but, um, anyway.
And if I may ask for a clarification, episode date equals desk, uh, date tested?
It, so it's the earliest date that, so it could, you, it could be several things. It could be date tested or if a person reported symptoms prior to their test date. It's the earliest date we believe the person was infected. So it's the closest we can get to, to understanding, um, when they got sick.
Okay. So it was close to my level of understanding that that's what it would be based on, something close to that. And now that, now the chart makes sense because yes, we did go up quite, not quickly, but we went up after April 5th. But April 5th is the day we got the positive result back. It doesn't mean that's when the episode started. So I appreciate the clarification on that.
And just, that's how the state is reporting the vast majority of their data. So we'll continue to mirror that. So you'll continue to see that episode day or that episode week as we move forward.
And I think it's a great idea to make sure that we're on the same stride as the state, especially as we're looking at these numbers being so specific to how we move forward and open up. Uh, and I do want to state also just publicly, uh, we've been straddling the purple and, or the red and the yellow for quite a while. Sometimes we dip below it, sometimes we go above it. Uh, I don't think that oftentimes at all we've ever reached into the purple. I don't think I've ever seen us hit a 7% positivity rate yet. I think 6.2 or 6.3 was our highest. Uh, but at the same time, um, you know, it just, just for us to know what our actions need to be to try to reduce that number and to try to get to where we want to be, which is a lot more open, uh, as far as our economy, as far as our ability to go to work and do things that we usually would do on a normal.
Supervisor Brown?
So I don't, I don't have any questions. I just want to reinforce, you know, it's unfortunate that all of this stuff is data-driven because, you know, the data doesn't solve the problems. Uh, the data actually adds to the problems if the data isn't accurate. We, so we have to reinforce that the data has got to be as accurate as it possibly can. The 6.2 that, that, uh, that Bruno just talked about, that's if the information was accurate. We don't know that. There's, there've been several instances where the, where we've questioned it, but it hasn't been questioned enough to where, where we find out whether or not that's true. It's just we accept it because that's the way it is and it takes too much time and we have, you know, we have a lot of stuff to do. But the opening of our businesses relies upon the accuracy of the data that we provide. And if we're going to be subjected to this color chart or Newsom's rainbow, as I call it, um, you know, we need to have the information accurate. It's, you know, they've got us down here where we're in worse shape than Napa County. And I, I, I don't believe that at all. This, this, uh, this whole system that he's, uh, that him and his staff have implemented is arbitrary and, um, and it's punitive. It's punitive to private sector who, uh, who, you know, that's who we represent. We don't represent the governor. And, uh, I'll continue, I'll maintain that throughout this entire thing, that we need to make sure the data is as accurate as it possibly can. That's how we hold ourselves accountable and those that are, that are running the, the numbers as far as the data, uh, goes, those, those folks have to be held accountable.
Um, and if, if I just may make.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I was just gonna respond and comment, a hundred percent agree about how critical the accuracy of the data are, understand the massive implications associated with them. And we're working really hard to, to, to ensure that we are, we are looking at the, the right data. We have a call with the state tomorrow. We're going to work through, um, some slight differences in numbers, but I, I think we're making progress and, and, um, really see the team focused on making sure it is, it is the most accurate data we can obtain. So, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any more questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Crandall?
Dr. Pace, uh, just wanted to ask about the tiered system with tier three. And I, I finally pulled up the actual sectors for the moderate, you know, substantial and moderate. And since we're teetering on that line of the moderate, um, it looks like if, if we can get to that level, we can open a lot more. So I, I do, I do hope that we can get a grasp on our numbers. That way we can, um, apply this as necessary. Of course, that means two weeks from now, uh, two or three weeks from now. Um, is there any way to, uh, try to, you know, hasten that anyway at all? Or is it, is that just the way it is?
Well, yeah. So this is, this is how this system is designed to work. So if we can get the caseloads down, the, the new cases down, that's really where the variable is that's keeping us in this zone. The test positivity rate has been pretty good consistently. But the cases, the cases go up and down. I think we may be looking at an increase in the cases over the next, over the next week or two, but we'll see. Uh, you know, but this is where, this is why the, um, the, uh, discussion that's been going on so kind of, uh, boringly, um, consistent around wearing masks and social distancing and all that. Because if we are able to slow down the transmission, have fewer cases, then we will, the numbers will improve and we won't be in the, um, we, we'll be able to move out of the zone into the next, into the orange zone and be able to open businesses up more. It's a, it's a pretty, from the public health point of view, this is a pretty straight, uh, connection where the more people can do things to slow the transmission, the fewer cases there will be and we'll be able to open the businesses up more. Um, so, right. And, and we need to be in the, so we're in this past week, the first week that they're using to count for, um, the current status, we are in the orange zone for that. The previous week we were in the red zone. And so you have to have two consistent weeks. So if we can have one or two more weeks, uh, we could potentially move into the, um, into the orange zone and open businesses more. So you're absolutely right. Thank you.
Any more questions? Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I need to make a correction for what I said. I, I misread the grid and I apologize for any confusion that might cause. It does say for substantial, which is tier two, um, that max capacity for gyms is 10% and not 25%. I apologize for that discrepancy.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Okay, any more questions from the board? For either Sarah or Dr. Pace? Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment. We're gonna start with the, uh, the Zoom room here. We don't have any hands up at this point. Can, um, Jake, can you just open the room? Well, I'll come back to the board chambers, uh, after we do the Zoom room. I see a hand up there. Okay, so go ahead, Jake.
All right, I will open up the, the Zoom floor here. I've sent a mute request to everyone in the Zoom room. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
If you'd like to make a comment or ask a question, Dr. Pace, uh, now is the time?
Hold on. Well, we won't miss you. Just wait.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close the room and we will go ahead and bring it back to, uh, board chambers. So Supervisor Sabatier?
We do have a public comment.
Please state your first and last name.
Mr. Pace, uh, are you familiar with the term exosomes, somes, which would be, uh, particles which are produced by human body, which would basically be identi- identical to what you would call virus? And is there a possibility, let's say, that the, the so-called virus could be mistaken for exosomes, which are, you know, common in our system? And I also still never heard of how the virus was being identified positively with, uh, what does it, how does the process go? Because you mentioned last time, you send it out. So when you send it out, where does it go and what do they do with it? Again, back to exosomes, uh, they are common, uh, in a human system. So there's, like I said, they are identical to the idea of the virus. So that's all I would, would like to ask. Thank you.
And did I miss it? Uh, did, did he, uh, did you give us your first and last name?
Yeah, I don't think the microphone was on at the time.
Milos Lubler, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Pace, I don't know if you can, uh, if you have any, go ahead.
Sure. Well, I mean, I think the, the, uh, the question that's being raised is, is this valid? Or is there such a thing as a coronavirus that's causing the problem? I mean, I think the speaker there is really questioning the validity of that, um, of the diagnosis and infections and all this. And, uh, you know, uh, I mean, people get their information from different sources, but the way we are identifying the virus is with a test that, that actually looks at the DNA of the virus. So it's, uh, well, the RNA of the virus. It's a, it's, it's, it's looking at the genetic material there. And, um, so it's not, I mean, if you accept that what we're doing is testing for, uh, infectious material, we, we are identifying clearly viral material because it's looking at the genetic, uh, material. So it's not likely that it's being misconstrued, that it's actually human cells that are being misconstrued as virus. But I mean, you know, there's a, there's a certain portion of the community that doesn't really accept the science. And so I'm not sure how to, how to address it other than that. But, um, okay. Thank you, Dr. Pace.
We don't have a microphone at this moment.
Well, I asked a question, what by Mr.'s, uh, Pace's, uh, understanding are exosomes? Do they exist to you? Or because they are part of our identity, they are part of our bodies? And they are round and they are same size as the virus would be if it existed? So I wonder how it's addressed during the process of identifying the virus? We still haven't gotten to how it's done. You mentioned DNA. Well, of course, DNA is present in exosomes as well. So that's pretty much where we are before, as far as I'm concerned.
Here, if I could just jump in for a moment and clarify, uh, this is, the, the speaker is asking of Dr. Pace. Dr. Pace is Lake County's Public Health Officer. He is a doctor. He, he has continued to be referred to as Mr. Pace. I think it is important to make that clarification.
Okay. So we do, Dr. Pace, I, I, you know, I think, um, obviously, uh, you gave the answer that you had to the question, um, you know, we're not going to turn into do a bait, a debate at this time. And just thank you for your questions, Mr. Malonovich. And, um, you know, are there any other public comment in the board chambers?
Does not appear that there are any more comments on this subject.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, close public comment at this point. We're gonna bring it back to the board, uh, for final comments for any, uh, any board members. Supervisor Sabatier?
Nope, I've said my comments. I, I appreciate, uh, the pathway and the work that we're working with. And now we have a, um, a very, uh, described and def- well-defined, uh, platform for us to follow to get to where we all want to get.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, uh, Dr. Pace, and this is just a suggestion maybe, and I don't know if this applies in, in the matrix that was put before us, but, uh, one thing that I've, um, personally had a scare with each time is funerals. Uh, we've had, uh, multiple funerals on the North Shore and, um, also there's potentially going to be another one and, and it's a place of gathering. Um, and I know that, um, in one instance, they, there was, um, it, there was at the actual chapel, uh, where they had the services, they, they did a very constructive, um, way to ensure people were socially distanced and whatnot. Um, but then always afterwards, there's somebody that in essence either tests, tests somewhere or has to be quarantined or whatever the case may be. Um, so I don't know, um, I think maybe it's something we can talk about in the COVID recovery or something you and I can probably brainstorm or, um, but I just, I just want to think of that because the, you know, I, I remember last meeting, we talked about gatherings, um, and, and that being the main source of transmission. Um, and, and of course, most of it is always staying home or whatever the case may be. And in fact, I've been home for the past week because of that situation. So, um, and I don't know if there's a way we can either brainstorm on that or, or, or something of that nature. Just the, just the suggestion, uh, of course with the matrix as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Crandall. Uh, Dr. Pace, I don't know if you had an answer?
Sure. I mean, um, yeah, I think you're, that's, your finger's right on the pulse of what we need to be working with now. And, um, you know, this is, this is really, goes back to how do we help the community take the steps they need to take to not be transmitting this? I mean, funerals, if this outbreak continues for months and months, we need to have funerals. That's part of what the human experience is. And, um, so how do we make them as safe as possible without people feeling like they have to hide from the government to do what they need to do? You know, I mean, I think it's to try to engage in a constructive conversation with the, the community of people that are going to do the funeral and how to try to do it safely or weddings or, you know, I mean, I think that's what all this is about, is how to have the businesses survive this whole thing is really important. How to get the kids an education during this next, these coming months? I, I absolutely agree. And I don't think it's going to come through legislation and, and cracking down necessarily. It's going to come through constructive engagement. And then when people are, are outliers, then we have to have the ability to rein them in a little bit. I mean, this is just a social contract. And, uh, so I absolutely agree with you. If, you know, I'm, I, anybody who contacts me, I pretty much tried to talk with them about how to do things as safely as possible, kind of recognizing human nature for what it is. And so, um, And so, and that's what the recovery group has tried to be. That's what, you know, I think these different groups are, are attempts at. And so any ideas anybody has, I'm more than open to kind of working with that, so.
Hey, thank you very much, Dr. Pace. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much and Dr. Pace, I appreciate you saying that. And it kind of triggers an idea or thought in my head and these are conversations I've already begun. We're in September now and we're starting to head into some of the major holidays that we traditionally celebrate as a community, as a people. And I know that we attempted to do that for the Fourth of July with the city of Clear Lake. And because of very specific rules and regulations that were followed, it would appear that we did it successfully without any negative repercussions or at least minimal repercussions. And I'm hopeful that as we move forward, that we can find ways to make those things happen again as we engage into this very heavy holiday season, starting with, starting with even Halloween. What do we do for Halloween? If not organized, it's probably gonna happen. And so I think that we need to look at ways to set up the guidelines and set up a regulated way of doing it versus allowing it to just happen organically where there is no regulations that might be followed. So I, I think that those are opportunities that we can take rather than waiting for something to happen because they will happen. So I, I think that having things organized and worked on and given specific guidelines is the way to go. So I hope that we can have those conversations because I know that those conversations have already begun, at least in the city of Clear Lake.
All right. Any more questions or comments at this point for Dr. Pace or any of his staff? All right, seeing none, Dr. Pace, I want to thank you again for the update, running through our new tiered system that has been rolled out by the state. And also just want to thank you too on the, doing a good job, both from all the staff, admin, public health, Denise, everybody, for getting on the epidemiologist now, to really work that local data and those numbers that were talked about today. And that's how we're gonna be successful in moving through these tiers that have been passed down by the state. So an ultimate goal is to get all of our businesses open so we can survive here. I'd love to see the bar owners and those other folks that aren't able to thrive right now. So thank you very much for helping us work through that. And also want to commend all of your department and staff and, you know, everyone through these fires, just being able to mobilize and to move through the situations that we dealt with and are still dealing with at this point. But thank you very much for the, the forward thinking and being prepared in a situation that none of us wanted to be in. But it was, you know, good job. So I'll also include that with our sheriff, all the OES staff, all the folks that have us stepped up. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move from this item. I know our next item is a 10 a.m. item. What I think we'll do is, I don't see any items that we can jump through that quick, maybe. Let's go to item seven point, seven point four here. Consideration of an advisory board appointment for the mental health board, childcare planning and development.
Yes, Mr. Chair, as you can see in your agenda packet, there are five applications for these slots attached to your packet.
Excellent. Uh, any comment on the? How many slots are, are open at this point?
Do you have information handy about the number of slots that are available?
Um, let me look really quick. There's four vacancies on the mental health board with two applications and eight vacancies on the childcare planning development with three applications.
Thank you supervisor Scott. Uh, any questions from the board at this point on the, go ahead supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, one of the applicants resides in Yukaya. What are the rules of being an applicant? Do they have to be a resident? Because I, I see that they work for an agency that does a lot of work in the area, but they do not reside in Lake County. Just kind of wondering what the rules and regulations are for that.
A very good question and from time to time, your board has appointed non-residents because they work in our county on a full-time basis and have an interest in, in whatever the nature of this appointment is. So it is something your board can do.
Supervisor Brown?
We, we have done that in the past, but it depends upon the bylaws of that particular committee. It's not just an automatic thing that you can do. Which one is it?
Um, it's for the children's services.
Which, which?
The childcare planning council.
So the child, the childcare planning council actually appoints their own membership and then it comes to your board for ratification.
Well, okay, so you're talking childcare planning, is that the one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, it's a reappointment, so they're obviously already on there, so all of them. So.
All right, there are no more questions?
They must have covered that, I guess, I don't know.
Todd supervisor Brown?
Well, no, I, I had a question about the mental health advisory board because one of the, you guys haven't met for years now at this point. It's been over two years.
Yeah, I would definitely say that.
And it's because of membership. And so will this guy, will this give you enough members now to actually hold meetings, is that?
That is the plan, I know that Todd, I'm not sure if Todd is on the line at this point.
Todd is, has been here. Can you allow Todd to unmute Jake?
Yes, I'm looking for him right here.
There, I think that works. I, I have technical difficulties with the camera.
All right, you're on Todd, go ahead.
Yes, we actually have been having mental health board meetings. But obviously, as, as been pointed out, we, we don't have a quorum.
Okay, you've had meetings, but you just can't vote on anything. Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. So we have a meeting, we got a couple, another new member a month or two ago. And so we're, we're, we're picking up speed. So, but yes, no quorum yet.
So the, and I don't want to get sidetracked here because this is just an appointment and I'm ready to move on these appointments. But isn't one of these appointments already the one that we did a month ago? I thought we just appointed Ronnie Duncan.
Um, yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Last month.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Was that just to finish out a term and then this is a reappointment or?
Correct, because it, it wasn't in line with the, with the timeline as far as the terms started and ended.
Okay, so I guess this is two, two motions or, well, I'll wait till you, do your public.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we're gonna go, so if there are no more questions from the board at this point on these appointments, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public, the public comment. We'll start with the, the virtual room, the Zoom room at this point. So Jake, I don't see any hands up. You go ahead and open up the room, we greatly appreciate it.
All right, I will, I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room here. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay Jake, hearing none, go ahead and close it and we'll bring it back to board chambers.
It doesn't appear anyone in the board chambers has anything to offer, including Bruno.
Okay.
I was looking for the bylaws.
Go ahead and bring it back then, we'll go ahead and close public comment, we'll bring back the board for action. Supervisor Brown?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Sheila Rosano and Ronnie Duncan to the mental health advisory board.
Second.
Motion and second, Johanna?
Okay supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes. Why are you yelling at me?
And supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Gloria Bradford, Laura Daly and Mary Pracer to the childcare planning and development.
Second.
Motion and second, Johanna, if you could do the roll call vote?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I, I do know we have a 10 a.m. item, but I will ask at this point for the boards. Would you like to take a five-minute break at this point and then come back, start at 10:05? Or are you guys ready to push through? Just want to make sure I'm checking.
I'm good either way.
Yeah, I'm okay too.
Okay, it sounds like then. No request for a break, we'll go ahead and move right on into our next item. So we'll move into our 10 a.m. item. It's our 6.3 timed item. It is a consideration of PG&E community and wildfire safety program update for Lake County. Okay Carol?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to introduce our representatives from PG&E. If they can just confirm for me that they are in the room and then I'll proceed with that.
I do see Aaron.
So the, our representatives are Aaron Johnson, Vice President of Wildfire Strategy, Jason Reagan, Director of Wildfire Mitigation, John Stallman, Manager of Micro Grid Strategy. And then also on hand are Donovan Lee, our Safety Strategy Specialist and Melinda Rivera, our Local Public Affairs Representative. And I want to check in and ask folks, how do you want to do this? I believe Melinda is going to share her screen at some point. So do you want to stay on camera for the start of it, Aaron, or how would you like to do it?
Sure, whatever makes the most sense. Again, good morning, everyone, thank you for having us. What we were hoping to do is have Melinda be able to share her screen, to share the presentation. And then partway through the presentation, because we know that there was a lot of interest in the microgrids and the temporary generation, that Jason Reagan be allowed to share his screen and was going to give us, give you sort of a county overview of the infrastructure through our GIS system and, and sort of walk through each individual project. So that's what we'd like to be able to do. So some screen sharing with the Jason Reagan and, and Melinda, if that's a possibility, that would be ideal.
Yes.
That's great, so Melinda, I believe Jake has given you the power to share your screen. We're ready.
I do want to, I want to, I do want to acknowledge Reno Franklin also is on the phone. He's the tribal liaison, I see his name there also.
Thank you supervisor Simon, Reno Franklin is on as well, thank you.
Okay, good morning, Board of Supervisors and the county administrator for Lake County. Thank you so much for inviting us this morning to present to you. Can you see the PowerPoint slide?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Melinda Rivera and I am here as the Local Public Affairs Representative for PG&E for Lake County. This morning, I'm here to introduce PG&E leadership and subject matter experts who will provide a brief update on PG&E's Community Wildfire Safety Program in Lake County. We will have presenting this morning, Aaron Johnson, the PG&E Vice President of Wildfire Safety, Jason Reagan, who is PG&E's Director of Public Safety Power Shutdown Mitigation Strategies, and John Stallman, who is our PG&E Manager for Micro Grid Strategy. I will now advance the slides.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you for, again, for having us, this is Aaron Johnson, it's, it's good to be back with you. I know I was in front of the resilience committee earlier this year and, and gave a preview of some of the work that we were planning to do this year to improve the public safety power shut-off program. Obviously, we are moving into the fall here and this is, you know, auspicious day, September 1st. So beginning really of the period where we really start watching for potential public safety power shut-off. So I'm here to update you on the work that we've done locally and especially with a strong focus today on the local microgrids of which we have exchanged some written correspondence about the status of those over the last several months. So as, as we indicated in our last letter, we think the best way to help understand these projects is, is to have this walkthrough that Jason Reagan and John Stallman, who are leaders in that organization for us and are in fact, leading those efforts to really walk you through how those projects will work in Lake County. So that will be the bulk of our presentation, I'll give some preliminary remarks here and then we'll get into the meat of the discussion. Just as a reminder, for us, the organizing principle this year is really that these events, if necessary, need to be smaller, they need to be shorter and they've got to be smarter. So a little bit about what that means, we've set an internal goal to reduce the size of events by one-third over last year so that we can really target the areas that are more likely to experience a PSPS. So we made a number of technical improvements, including the microgrids that you're gonna hear about today for the grid to make sure that we can make the, the footprint smaller. They've got to be shorter, the duration was simply, there's no other way to put it other than unacceptable last year in terms of, of the duration that some customers experienced of outage. So we've almost doubled our helicopter fleet and really improved our resource allocation process to make sure that we'll have enough folks available to try and cut the inspection time after a public safety power shut-off event in half. Our goal is 12 hours of daylight this year to make sure that we can restore power to customers. And then finally, smarter for customers and that really means two things. In my mind, it means in our, in our planning processes and it really means making sure that we're, our information flow is much better to agency partners and to customers. And also then that we are supporting communities more than we did last year. And that means improved things like community resource centers and some partnerships with some community-based organizations that we are helping to fund to be able to provide more support to our most vulnerable customers. I know we've given overviews of a lot of these programs in the past and so we'll be happy to answer questions about specific elements. There's a fair number of slides in the appendix that I, I think Melinda has sent over and has been distributed. We're happy to cover any of those, but I really wanted to make sure today that we focused on the microgrid item. We're gonna cover a couple of other things quickly, but we'll, happy to take questions as we move through the presentation on this, on, on many of those other items, as, as there is interest and time. So I wanted to give you a snapshot of how we've done from a progress standpoint in terms of, of where we are. So first, community resource centers. We have the three sites ready to go at this time. We're gonna show you a map of that in a second, so we'll get into that one in more detail. We, we're looking to install 15 sectionalizing devices, that work is complete and all commissioned. So those devices are operating today and are in our system, they will help with reliability as well as help us narrow the portions of the grid that might be affected by a public safety power shut-off. We are making substantial progress on nine different, either substation generation or microgrid projects. And we're gonna go through each of those in a little bit of detail here in a moment. System hardening, we're pursuing eight miles of line and the county five are complete to date. We're targeting 103 miles of vegetation, we're about 80% complete with that work. That is an end-of-year goal, like the hardening goal for us. We are, we've installed seven new weather stations. You'll know that Lake County was a big area of focus for us over the last year and a half. And so many have been installed already. We, we set that goal about a month and ahead in advance, so we continue to install weather stations and cameras to the extent that there is, spots are identified. So we continue to welcome feedback on additional ways we can build out the weather station and camera network in Lake County. Just as a reminder, next slide, Melinda, please. The infrastructure in the county, we have about 1,100, almost 1,200 miles of distribution line. About 60% of it is in that so-called high fire threat district, the elevated and. uh, the elevated and extreme fire risk areas, also called Tier Two and Tier Three, and about 200 miles of transmission line, about 90% of which is located in these high fire threat areas. We serve, um, 3,800 customers in Lake County, 2,200 of whom are in our medical baseline, uh, program and about 300 critical facilities. Just as a reminder, for us, in this, uh, um, recounting the number of customers served is, uh, the number of meters, really, it's not, uh, people served. Generally, that's about three to one in the, uh, in the ratio, uh, for general planning purposes, but. Um, so let's, let's, uh, speak to CRCs. Um, the goal this year obviously was to move indoor out of the tents from last year. Um, we had really strong support across the community in Lake County for CRCs last year and the sites that we were able to stand up and strong local partnership and support, and we're very appreciative of that. We're trying to, um, have that ready to go this year as opposed to the plan that we were building on the fly last year. So as you can see, we have, um, three of the indoor sites are ready and two, we are, um, finishing up the negotiations on that and, and look to have those activated as soon as possible. Um, we have six outdoor sites that are ready, uh, as well, um, to complement, um, uh, where, uh, uh, the potential for, uh, the need to do outdoor sites, uh, given COVID considerations. So we're going to take the lead from the county as to what you would like us to do in an event, uh, whether we go indoor or outdoor or perhaps a mix depending on locations. We also have a fleet of Sprinter vans available for more remote locations or as another alternative. Um, and so we're trying to be ready for, um, whatever COVID conditions dictate are the circumstances uh, in community resource centers. Um, so, uh, so that that plan is much more ready to go. And, uh, uh, we're really appreciative, again, of the partnership this year in getting these sites ready. Recall that we are, uh, in some instances, I know sites already have a backup generation installed, but generally, if they don't, we will provide that backup generation as well as all of the services and do minor ADA upgrades, uh, as well as install a transfer switch to any location that wants to, uh, be a CRC. So we are investing in these sites and, and, uh, hopeful that they can, uh, we can have long-term arrangements in place that will really, uh, keep this plan, uh, ready and stable for years to come. So, um, with that, I, I'm going to move, uh, on and certainly we'll take questions as folks have them about community resource centers, about our effort to build, um, microgrids and, uh, and provide temporary generation in, uh, in Lake County. Uh, you'll see here, um, two different sort of flavors, uh, we're doing nine different sites across the county. Um, some are temporary generations staged at our substations as outlined in the letter, uh, that we sent to the Resiliency Committee, and, um, some are, uh, temporary microgrids where we're actually supporting, um, a bit of a local community with, again, power during a PSS event. Maybe only in the PG&E world, uh, is the difference between those, um, makes sense, but we'll walk through that with the team a little bit here. So, um, I did want to, uh, move to the, uh, next slide and, um, uh, at this point, really hand it off to Jason and John to walk us through the status of each of these different microgrids and where they are in development. Uh, and well, as well as, um, uh, uh, you know, uh, provide you a, a visual overview of sort of the areas that will be served, um, through the electric grid, um, for each of these, uh, different microgrids. Um, as by way of introduction, Jason Reagan is, uh, for many years, uh, been the Director in Charge of our, uh, Distribution Control Centers, which is really the operating arm of the distribution system across our territory. So he knows the grid about as good as anyone in all of PG&E. Um, he has been working for the last year or so, uh, in between bouts in our EOC as, uh, as a, as a BIC for COVID and, uh, and other, uh, uh, the, the recent fire events. He is, um, been leading a team that has been focused on infrastructure development uh, and projects that can help mitigate PSS. And so he's very, very close to this work and is, um, I think, uh, the right person to be giving us this overview. He'll be supported in this discussion by John Stallman, who's, um, one of the folks, uh, really working for us to make sure that we have microgrids and local solutions across our territory and has been, uh, particularly focused on some of these projects in Lake County, uh, as, uh, as part of his duties. So, uh, I'm going to turn it now over to Jason and John and they'll walk us through this next section of the presentation.
Good morning, everybody, can I get a, uh, mic check from Aaron Johnson that you can hear me okay?
Uh, you're coming through loud and clear, Jason.
Great, um, first and foremost, appreciate the opportunity to get in front of all of you and explain a little bit about how Pacific Gas Electric, um, as your utility provider is going to be better than we were last year and improved. And then also listen to any feedback to continue that improvement based on, uh, input from you or any rep, any of the community that you represent. I am sharing my video, I just wanted to virtually say hello, introduce myself. I'm going to turn the video off here in a minute just to save a little bandwidth where I think most of us are working from home and, uh, I've got a full house of kids, uh, homeschooling and any little bandwidth helps here. So my name is Jason Reagan, I've worked at Pacific Gas Electric for about 20, uh, this is my 26th year. Uh, I've had the opportunity, uh, to support your community on, uh, winter storms, heat events, uh, planned work. Uh, I started in, uh, natural gas portion of our utility and found my way leading, uh, our control centers. I was pulled out or asked to be, uh, support a new role, uh, this year, uh, on an interim basis and it's really to mitigate the need for a public safety power shut-off. And frankly, what that means is, look, turning the power off cannot be our only option, uh, nor can it be our first one. And, uh, thankfully, uh, with the feedback from some of you in the county and other counties and the men and women at PG&E, it's not our only option this year. And that's what John and I are going to speak a little bit about here. Um, on this slide, uh, as I go ahead and turn the video off, uh, on this slide, surely five substations. I have personally worked out of these substations or been to them as part of this public safety power shut-off mitigation effort. Um, either over my career or within the last six months, um, I'm happy to say that we have three of the five substations fully ready and able to be supported. Uh, during about two weeks ago, the state had a grid capacity need and in fact Clear Lake and Hartley Sub, which we're going to spend a lot of time in this, uh, GIS interface to really kind of show you a bit more detail than just, uh, uh, this, this, uh, this nice slide here. But Clear Lake and Hartley were both, uh, fully supported up and operational. We actually, uh, we're in what we call a peak, uh, shaving or load blocking condition and what that allows is us to put this generation online without interrupting the communities you, you represent and support the greater good of the capacity needs across the state. Uh, it was, uh, multiple mega lots in each one of the substations. We appreciate your cooperation on this far, this far getting to a point where we can actually do this. Uh, it's a, it's a bit of a, of a, of an, of a, of a new need, uh, that we've seen relative to state capacity needs, uh, in not, in, in almost 20 years, but, um, Lake County was instrumental, uh, with these substations and supporting a bit of mega lot relief. Now, moving forward, these five substations will allow us to keep customers energized and your communities energized where it's safe to do so. And we'll speak more to that when we get to the GIS, um, portion of this presentation, which I think is probably really more informative than a few of these slides. But we want to just briefly show on here where we sat, we have five substations we're targeting for addressable load. That load is, again, customers, uh, that are able to be safely energized based on event conditions. Clear Lake Sub, done, finished, completed. Hartley Sub, done, finished, completed. Canacti, we're in the process of finalizing that. Um, the one difference between the top two and the last three is the top two actually have generation on site because we know this is where we're going to have our most at-risk conditions. And frankly, where we also have prisons, hospital, OESs, other critical county infrastructure that supports societal continuity needs. Canacti, Red Bud and Highlands have all very similar levels of that need. Uh, but what our plans are is to have them pre-engineered, ready, uh, on-site and able to be energized, but not necessarily hooked up and energized in use. What that allows us to do is if at any time the environment throws us a bit of a curveball and we have to adjust our posture, it keeps an operational period available for us to be able to pivot, uh, based on weather intelligence. So the good news here is that we've got all five substations tracking. Red Bud and Highlands are tracking to be done by the 15th, if not earlier. Uh, frankly, they're already in the final stages of the playbook readiness and the onsite generation, so we expect to have those in place well before the 15th. Uh, but that's the target that we have for, for right now. Um, we're going to speak to this a little bit more, so I appreciate the patience. I'd like to move into the microgrid portion of this conversation. Uh, and this is my partner, John Stallman, uh, if we can go to the next slide. And John, can I get a mic check from you and then we can continue to move along?
I, I got a quick question if I could.
Good morning.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, well, I've got a question from the general public about the availability of these slides to the public later. Is there a chance we can attach the link to these, uh, to our website? Is that? Is that something we can do?
Uh, this is Aaron from PG&E, uh, we're certainly, uh, happy to share the slides with you. Melinda can pass those along and, uh, I leave it to you to, to how you share them with the public, but we certainly were giving you, them to you with every expectation that you would, uh, be able to, um, uh, that they would be shared.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, I, I think it's, uh, it's really good information and I think it's going to be, uh, helpful for people to be able to see this at their own, on their own time.
Okay, let's continue.
All right, excellent, thank you, and good morning, this is John Stallman and I am with the group within PG&E as Jason and Aaron mentioned that is focused on microgrids. Um, my, uh, formal role here is in integrated grid planning and innovation. Um, and we, our team heads up the microgrid strategy throughout our service area. I'm also heavily involved with resilience projects for communities and so engaging a lot with community leaders and, and administrative entities to, to create, uh, resilience for critical infrastructure. So I, I take a big focus here in, in Lake County and I've been working with a lot of, a lot of you, um, on this board and, and, uh, administrators, so thank you for all your help to this point. Um, I'd like to walk through with you these several different microgrids that we're, we're developing within your county. And the core difference between what we're doing at the substations, where we're loading generation into the substation and then energizing all of the wires that are out of the substation or what we would call circuits or feeders. In this situation, we've identified locations where the substation is not usable and, and would not be usable if there was a, a weather event over that area. So we've created more, uh, smaller, more surgical-based microgrids that connect to the wires of the distribution system. And so we would call that a mid-feeder, uh, intertie where we're going to connect a generator directly to the distribution wires. And we do that by creating either permanent sites or partially permanent sites. And we use a special device called a pre-installed interconnection hub that allows us to quickly plug the generators into that location and then isolate a particular area, which is generally speaking the main street or downtown safe to energize portion of, of commercial, um, and critical infrastructure. And so we turn, we isolate that area off and then we turn the generation on and we can operate that, um, energize just those areas that are safe to energize in, in virtually most weather conditions. Um, and so we have four different locations that are, that we've designed and planned for Lake County and working with, um, cities and county, we've been able to identify, uh, key infrastructure and, and core pockets of, of, um, your cities that, that are, could be served by this type of technology. So first off, in, in Clear Lake, um, we have, uh, Clear Lake is served by the Highlands Substation. But the Highlands Substation is located in Tier Two and so during a, uh, weather event that is over the top of the town where we have high winds over the town, we have these two other microgrids planned to serve the, the, the key areas within the town. And so Clear Lake South was identified as one area that we could isolate and that encompasses the, the high school, the Walmart, the, um, the community college, a couple of county facilities, a grocery store and a couple of restaurants. And, and that location, we've actually, um, negotiated the land and we have the land now and we're into construction. We've parked the generators on site and, um, that will be fully operational in September. Um, Clear Lake North is, uh, the generation is located actually at the PG&E Service Center where convenient for us, that's our land, so we were able to create a way to connect to the grid there. And that will power up grocery stores and banks and a health center and a police station and a fair number of residences in the core pocket of, of Clear Lake North. That also includes some of the medical facilities and in the, in the area there. So, um, we're happy that both those projects are moving along and, and should be completed here in, in September, so looking forward to those. Um, Middletown is another one of our locations and Middletown being at the southern end of the, of the county, we recognize that there's a core pocket there that is, has underground wires which is safe to energize. And we, uh, happily enough, as progress would be advancing quite quickly on these, is we've now secured the land with our land partner and thank you very much. Um, for that, we had a, a bit of a slow go getting some land in that area and we've been able to finalize that now and, and so we're working towards a December date and we'll, we'll do everything we can to accelerate that. But in all, uh, practicality, these construction projects do have details to them and so we are looking at a December date for Middletown. Um, we heard the county loud and clear on needing to address the North Shore. So we did a pretty extensive study on the North Shore and we'll go through and, and take a look at that. And Lucerne provided, um, an opportunity that would fit, be fit for this technology. So we're moving down that path. We've, um, we've done all the initial scoping and we've been, uh, in discussions with, with our county partner on the land there and we're really working right into engineering and, and, uh, as soon as the land and the design is confirmed, then we can start to put a date to that location, but we've got to cross those two points first and, and land is our biggest issue there. So we need to make sure we, we get to that and then we'll identify a date for that location. And so with that said, these substations and microgrids, Jason and I would like to take you on a, a real fly-through in Google Earth using our, um, GIS, our Geographic Information System and the layers that are within Google Earth and we'll take you for a fly-through so you can actually see where these areas are and what they look like. So Jason, um, let's go ahead and tee up our Google Earth and we'll, um, show where these are going to be.
Yeah, I'm bringing it up right now, I just want to confirm that you can see the, uh, my screen and the districts that I'm showing?
Yeah.
Confirmed, I can see your screen.
So, so, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we just wanted to recognize that look at PG&E and I've been here long enough that sometimes we talk in terms that don't resonate, uh, with counties or OESs or our cooperatives and, and, uh, we recognize the districts that are being served here and represented and, and we're going to try to do our best to speak to that today, uh, by flying through the various districts. Uh, I wanted to also show just quickly, um, that the tool that we're utilizing is similar to Lake County GIS portal that you all, uh, have and utilize throughout the community. We, we shamelessly will, will utilize bits of data, CAMZ files, SHAPE files to help us better understand the community needs. So it's nothing new or groundbreaking, but it is an, an advancement in our capabilities. So, um, just confirming one last time, John, you can see now the GIS, uh, PG&E overview of Lake County?
Yes, I can, Jason, I can see it.
Okay, great. And so, uh, ladies and gentlemen, if you bear with us for about maybe 10 minutes or so, maybe just a couple minutes longer, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drive and, and, uh, and John's going to speak similar to a tour you may have in a, in a city where, where you got the bus driver and the, and the tour guide. Um, but I wanted to respectfully also acknowledge, look, we appreciate your support during this pandemic response time. I'm the Deputy Incident Commander for PG&E's, uh, pandemic response and also current, uh, Incident Commander for our wildfire response, uh, that's, uh, impacting the state of California. So our Emergency Operations Center is up and, and going and we recognize and appreciate all your cooperation with the, uh, Lima November, you, uh, Uniform Fire in the surrounding areas, uh, just south of you and, uh, and our, our support is with you 100%. So what you see on the screen here is, is of course Lake County. I'm gonna show quickly at a high level a couple of things that John's going to walk into. Um, I first wanted to show just a little bit of the actual substations that we're focusing on. I'm sorry, the entire feeders, uh, which are distribution-related that support, uh, your county. All the orange here is distribution overhead, uh, facilities that traverse across, uh, your county. And as I zoom in a little bit, you will likely see, as long as the bandwidth cooperates with me, these purple and these green lines, these are major transmission lines, uh, that I know many of you are familiar with. They are the bulk electric system that supports energy into your, uh, county, similar to major highways or roads if I labeled those on. into your county, similar to major highways or roads, if I labeled those on, like 175, 281, 53, right, 29, they're the major roads. And anytime if those roads are interrupted, you have challenges in the local communities and are getting access to those, to those county, to those cities and neighboring communities. So I'm going to turn the roads off for a minute to get rid of a bit of the cluster. But in general, what we wanted to speak with here is that you have major transmission lines at 115,000 KV volt level and 60 KV volt level that really surround greater lake area and the southern portion of the various districts you represent. I'm going to turn those transmission lines off until maybe we need them, if there's questions. But right now, what we wanted to focus on is what are we doing to really truly avoid interrupting customers when, 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 when we can keep the power on safely without adding risk or potential life loss with catastrophic wildfire events and what we're doing differently. So you do see the circuits. I'm going to turn those off just for a quick second and, and talk specifically about the new isolation devices. All of these orange dots that you see here are specific to new devices that we automated and or installed this year strategically targeting the ability, I'm going to turn on high fire threat districts, to isolate areas where we have high fire threat conditions, meaning humidities and fuels that could lead to catastrophic wildfire impacts if a source of, 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 of fire start is provided in these areas. And we recognize that our assets can pose that. So it's specifically up here more towards Hartley and the, and the prison area. We have a few devices that we put in service that if we didn't have these in service, you would see customers impacted into this orange area. So not going to spend a lot of time on the devices. I think it's somewhat self-explanatory. We've done good work. They're completed. Bottom line, they'll allow us to, to operate our grid more strategically with an emphasis on avoiding customer interruption. As a control center leader, I'm always looking for more devices and more flexibility on the grid. And these are very welcome, but they're specifically for 2020, over 600 devices were installed across our service territory to truly just avoid customer interruption. All right. So now I'm going to get back on to a little bit on the generation and the alternative power solutions that we have. These were the circuits. If, these are the substations that we are targeting, that we spoke to earlier about various stages and readiness. And then if I turn on these layers and I'm going to turn off the circuits to make it clear, these polygons represent all of the available customers and assets that we could energize if safe to do so. Now what we don't want to mislead here is that all of this area can safely be energized and we have at-risk conditions locally in the county and they're not as a result of transmission loss. If they were, if we have a public safety power shut off that's a result of transmission loss, which we, which I, I'm going to turn back on here again one more time, these major transmission paths, but we don't have at-risk conditions in the county, then these are fully capable of being able to be supported with backup, I'm sorry, temporary generation solutions or microgrid solutions. When it's a localized event, we're not able to have all of this service territory energized. And I'm going to go back to what we call the high fire threat districts that we partner with the state with and CalFire and others. And you can see how the orange and the red overlays some of these polygons. And I'll just speak specifically up here to Hartley area. This outer white band is really where all of our PG&E assets serve the customers and your, and your, your representatives in the district. But this light kind of teal green area is the actually safe to energize portion that we're targeting for a public safety power shut off mitigation need. So bottom line, what this is showing us is that this green area, if we didn't have a temporary generation solution available, we wouldn't be able to serve these customers. And we found that out last year. And so what we're doing this year is to be better that where we can serve customers safely, we're well prepared to be able to do that. Of course, it's always incident specific. Last year, we had a one in 100 year PSPS wildfire event and hopefully that's not the same this year. But, but if it is, we'll, we'll adjust and pivot and be able to serve as many customers as we can safely. With that, I'm gonna pause and hand it over to John Stallman. And I think, John, we're going to start at Clear Lake and, and I'm going to turn off the high fire threat districts to make it a little cleaner. And I'm going to go back and put on the, the substations, the circuits and the polygons. And then I'll be prepared to, to turn on the microgrids or turn off whatever you'd like. So ladies and gentlemen, if you bear with us about another five to eight minutes, we'll get done with this and we'll entertain any questions you may have. So John, go ahead.
Very good, Jason. Thank you. And just for this sake, could you turn on the high fire threat tier two, tier three? And let's start with Clear Lake Substation. And as Jason mentioned earlier, on the status of this substation, the substation now has generation completely loaded at the substation. And what you're seeing in the pink area is essentially the, the, what we call addressable load. That's all the circuits that we could turn on through the generation at that substation. What we will end up doing is needing to probably trim those circuits based off from what's safe to energize and those tier two, tier three boundaries. And what you're looking at there is the substation and then the open space on the right-hand side of the substation is where the generators are placed today. So you can see that. And if you're on the road there, you can look at those, the generators and get a feel for what that looks like. You can see that the southern portion of Lakeport is energized by these circuits. Each one of the, the purple flashes that you see there are what we call different feeders. And there are several different feeders that, that come out of Clear Lake Substation. And so those are the addressable areas. You can see also over at Soda Bay, on the right-hand side of the circuit, it passes through some tier two. So be aware that if we only have a transmission impact and the winds are someplace else, we'll be able to operate and support Soda Bay. If the winds are at this local level and they're directly over this area, then that line passing through the tier two will also need to be turned off. And so Soda Bay will only be energized during transmission level events and not at a distribution level event when the winds are directly over the top. So you can kind of see where it gets trimmed off by the overlap of the pink and the orange. So let's go ahead and move up to Hartley right quick. And you've, you focused on this, Jason, already and highlighted that how we may need to trim down the circuit is to the, to the blue areas. We've added sectionalizing devices to do that. We heard your messages from the county loud and clear that this is an important location. So we scoped a bunch of work to be able to enable this to occur. Our goal is to continue to advance this location until we're able to support the prison or, or the jail and the hospital, which is just to the north of this view. And we will also are trying to advance the system and we're, this is a work in progress to be able to reach the schools and a grocery store, State Way and some other areas to the, to the north end of Lakeport, which is the south side of this view. So this is a work in progress. Our initial areas, we're going to be able to energize the blue. We will increase our abilities to energize as we, as we work through several additional engineering efforts that we have in flood. So working our way around the, the lake over on the Lucerne side. So we've been working with the county on a piece of property to the south end of, of the, of the microgrid. The blue area is the area that's feasible to be energized. So what we call that is technically feasible area. And you can see how it isolates right at the edge of the tier two. And the area that it doesn't have any orange on it, that's the non-high fire threat area. So, so that's clear of fire threat. So we can energize that overhead that's in that area. So Lucerne, we're in progress. We need to tighten the bolts on our land and our engineering. And then we're, we're poised to be moving forward on that. I believe the engineering, I received a note, we're, engineering is complete at this point. So now we're, we're just needing the land and then we can move forward with construction. So Red Bud Substation, we also heard from county and, and local jurisdictions that this, this area would be important for us to consider. So we focused in on the Red Bud Substation. Now, taking a look at those circuits and how far they spread out into the tier two and tier three, there is a relatively small area of, of Red Bud Substation that will be able to be used. The purple area right there is what we can use when there's weather over the top of the, of the town. But when Clear Lake Oaks is clear of that weather and it's occurring someplace else by impacting the transmission, then we should be able to energize a much larger area here. So that being said, largely the Red Bud generation is going to support the Clear Lake Oaks community. So then moving to the south there, you can see several blue polygons. Those blue areas, the one to the north is what we would call Clear Lake North. And, and working with the local jurisdiction there, we, we've identified the key critical infrastructure, including the medical facilities and a police station, fire station, grocery stores. And, and that is the feasible area that we can energize in all weather conditions. So even if the wind is over the top of the area, we'll be able to operate this microgrid, barring any unforeseen additional impacts. So you can see the Highlands Substation there and you can see where it's positioned in the tier two. And then the orange lines are actually overhead lines. So overhead lines in tier two with high winds over the top of the area would mean that we cannot operate the overhead that overlaps with that tier two. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to operate this blue polygon. So we're doing a wide array of work in that area. You can see some green lines in there and those are underground wires. So we can operate the underground wires and then we're working on all the overhead facilities in that area. We've created a partnership with the community college to have generation on, on, on their land. They've been a great partner. And then this small polygon to the north there, you can see the hospital. There's a county facility there. You can see the large building in the middle is the Walmart. To the south end is a grocery store. And then there's a couple of small restaurants right in that area as well to help support the local community. Moving on over, let's stop by Canacti right, right quick, Jason. And we'll, we'll take a look at Canacti's substation. And the key emphasis here I want to recognize is the high fire threat area. We'll turn on the addressable load, which is the orange area. So you can see it, it touches quite a bit of space, but the two shades of orange and the one lighter one is around Mount Canacti itself. And that area is all tier two. The red area is the tier three. So this circuit overlaps with a high percentage of tier two and tier three. And that's why we developed the strategy of staging it offsite and then having it completely pre-engineered so that we can move it onsite if we have addressable load, meaning we can actually turn the generators on. If we don't have that, if the winds are directly over the area, then all of that tier two, tier three would not be able to be operated. And so we want to be able to pivot with our generation strategy and put it where it's needed most and able to be used. Let's go ahead and move down to the Middletown area. And Middletown uniquely sits in this small pocket surrounded by tier three, has a little bit of tier two. The blue is where we can energize, a little bit bigger of a pocket. If the winds are someplace else, we could energize a bit more of it. And then if you zoom in tight to the town core, you'll see a, you'll see a white boundary. And that infrastructure is, there's a big chunk of underground there and then there's some overhead, but it's in a, it's in a clear area where there's no fire risk in that area. And so we, we are developing the isolation to that green polygon. And then we've partnered with the local tribe there and thank you very much. That was really excellent lean in and, and step forward by, by the tribal council to help us with some land to identify where to site the equipment. We, we tried at several other locations and, and we were unable to work, work out a situation that would be sufficient for the polygon. So we were able to arrive at that and now we're back on track. So thank you very much. And, and that's a, that's your flyover of the Lake County area. The, the circuits you see on the screen are what we expect to energize if we had a transmission level impact. So Jason, do you want to follow up with anything else or we'll take questions?
Yeah, just open it up to any questions and appreciate your patience. We just wanted to make sure we had time to get through everything. So we're, we're here and welcomed anything that you may have, feedback or just any inquiries. Appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. I think what we'll do is, if you want to leave the map up or however we're going to do this, if I can't see you, board members, if you have questions specific, just go ahead and let me know if I don't see you. But I want to thank you for the overall presentation and what we're doing. I guess the initial question I would have, best case scenario, what type of numbers are we affected by a customer count if we're able to operate? Let's just say it's, it's a good scenario and we're able to operate all of what we have to energize in Lake County. What type of numbers are we talking? I know last year when we had it, we had about 42,000 customers, I think, that were affected. Do we have a number on what would be the improvement this year? Obviously, like I said, a best case scenario to just single grid opportunities?
Yeah. So, you know, I did, we get this question a lot and I wish we had somewhat of a better answer, but, but we also don't want to be misleading. You know, it's really event specific, but I hear the frankness in your voice as far as best case scenario. And it wasn't just over 40,000 customers or so. Look, our efforts and what I'm seeing here, we're looking for at least a 50% opportunity to keep customers energized. But it's, it's very, very hard to, to, to fully commit to that. And, and I'm trying to be as transparent as I can. Some of these substations have four good circuits. And what we aim for is, is about 50% of that load. We try to make sure we can do so safely. So I would, I would ask John if he's got any round numbers he'd like to share. I, I'm, I'm confident in saying that a majority of the customers in this county that are in this non-tier two and tier three area, anywhere you don't see orange and red, you know, those equate to accounts that could be apartment buildings, large facilities, things like that. So I would be welcome to a more definite answer to see what we can do and do some math and add it up. But, but John, I'm thinking here, you know, about half of what we impacted last year, if we have ideal conditions, we could commit towards trying to make sure that, that we can keep those customers energized. It's just, it's really hard to answer it. And I know we could be better than that, but we just frankly are not comfortable giving a number that, without events and incidents. But I would say a majority of the customer in the tier one, you should all be able to have confidence that PG&E as a utility is going to look to have you safely energized where we can. John, any comments on that?
No, I, I think you're good. And, and we can take a follow-up item, Jason, to get a, if, if we were able to energize all of the orange circuits on the screen, we can give you a perspective of what that number might look like. What Jason is mentioning is when we have to trim the circuits down based off from where the weather arrives, then that gets a little bit more difficult for us to actually define how many customers will be supported.
Okay.
It really, it really is based on the weather.
I have a few questions.
Go ahead, supervisor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the update. I know as being part of the PSPS committee, we've been trying to apply pressure, however it is that we can, and still work in partnership to make these things happen. And I know that September 1st was your deadline and it actually looks like you're doing a pretty decent job of getting there, except for a few things, still a little bit behind. But at the same time, you're, you're, you're creating things that weren't in existence before. So I appreciate the effort of almost reaching that mark. First off, this is not related to PG&E, but I'm looking at the Community Resource Center list. I just want to say thank you to our local tribes. The majority of those on the list are coming from our local tribes and I appreciate that. And I hope that if there's a future need, that we can look internally at the county because we do have some spaces that are maybe underutilized that could be utilized for such. I'm thinking we have a clubhouse over, I think in Nice or Upper Lake around there. I know we have the town hall down in Lower Lake and those are all buildings that at this moment, I don't think are being very much utilized. And especially during a PSPS, if we want to offer something for our community to have access to, that we should look at those as being a, a potential use by PG&E. But I do appreciate the fact that those that stepped up to offer a place have done so and wanted to make sure and mention that. When it comes to the weather stations, I know that a lot of times those weather stations are on peaks. Do you have weather stations at your, at your substations as well to really know what the actual wind and weather patterns look like on the ground? Because obviously the peaks are going to give you the worst case scenario, but it could be drastically different what's happening where the actual wires are.
Yeah, supervisor. Thank you for the question. Melinda, I don't know if you could share your screen and we could go to page 17 of the appendix. Just to clarify, the cameras are generally on peaks and so that you have maximum Just to clarify, the cameras are generally on peaks, and so that you have maximum advantage. And I know a lot of folks have been using those cameras with the recent wildfires, alertwildfire.com, a great website, lots of different entities contributing to different cameras and all integrated into one system that, you know, CAL FIRE can use for operations and move those cameras as needed. So that's, that's the cameras. Those are mostly on peaks. The, the, the weather stations themselves are more, they are generally attached to our assets. That's the easiest place for us to put them, and it gives us, you know, we're augmenting the network that existed so that, you know, that wasn't always right next to where our assets actually are. So as you can see, this is the, since we started installing weather stations, these are the 23 locations across the county that you're seeing on your screen where we've done, obviously seven of those coming in this year. And that is that whole network, which, you know, we will continue to build out based on local input feedback from especially the fire community, emergency responders and emergency managers. And then our own weather folks are just constantly looking to augment that network as much as we can with any gaps. So they, they tend to be, they're up high if our assets are up high, and they're down low if our assets are down low, so that we have much better local information. So I don't know if that answers the question, or if there's particular areas where you'd like to see focus going forward. You know, we can certainly do that. It certainly appears to me that in Lucerne and North Lake area, we have some opportunity to continue to augment that network.
And hey, Aaron, if I could, if I just jump in, one thing we also have is our safety infrastructure protection teams that we dispatch during these events, and they provide real-time local weather monitoring in a, in a virtual platform that gives us on-the-hour updates, and they can be strategically staged to, to locations that maybe we need to have a little bit more information. It doesn't have a weather station. So just another, another addition to, to our awareness model.
And I appreciate the answers, and I know from speaking with our air quality control director, Douglas Gerhart, that we have a unique weather pattern here. We're our own air district. We don't share it with any other county, and there's, there's a reason for that. And not knowing what the weather patterns are here locally and using outside sources to know it might not give us the appropriate findings. So having those weather stations, I think, is really important, and I appreciate you showing the map and letting us know that you are using your assets rather than just placing it on top of the peaks. I have another couple of questions. One, I'll be honest, I was a little disappointed to see that Highlands did not take the same priority as Hartley, since it does affect a hospital and other important infrastructure. But at the same time, read a little further to the right and said September 15th. I'm wondering, since it says engineering, design, purchasing, and construction, is September 15th a realistic goal that that could happen? I, I don't understand the level of need of what construction would be or any of those other things, so that's why I wanted to ask.
Yeah, it absolutely is a, a realistic date, if not sooner. I got an update right before this, called Red Bud and Highland. We actually have kind of a Highlands, North Highland, South. It's more detailed than probably you're looking for, but spoke model where we can deploy the generation to it. And again, it's just being able to be flexible. We have a pretty large surface territory. We're committing a significant amount of generation here based on frankly good solid feedback that's been coming from, from many of you and others in your OES and sheriff departments, that we could be better in this Lake County, and we will be. But please rest assured, Highlands is considered a priority. It's just the way that we have the generation onsite and how it's located. So number first, 15th is solid, and we provide a weekly update if needed to, to kind of maybe build that confidence.
Jason, John Stoman here. I'd like to add too, just for clarity, that the Clear Lake South microgrid covers the hospital. So we specifically targeted the hospital and wanted to build in resilience there so that it could be operated during all weather conditions and then not have the limitations that generation at Highlands substation would have. So I, I hear the need for Highlands, but just try, try to understand that Clear Lake North and Clear Lake South were developed specifically as a more robust type of microgrid to serve those critical facilities.
Right, right. And like I said, when I looked to the right and saw September 15th, and you say it's a realistic goal, then I, I think that's a very, a good timeframe, and hopefully nothing happens between then and now. And even then, we're prepared for those situations to come, and hopefully that won't happen until then, or happen at all this year, if we're lucky. I have two more comments. One is it's related to PSPS, and I've spoken about it a couple of times in the last few weeks. And now PG&E is directly related to this program through the CPUC, and that's the SGIP. And I'm wondering if you have any words of advice on how to get people to apply for the SGIP, which is the ability to get self-generating incentives so that they can install batteries, they can install batteries whether they have solar panels or not. But I'm also being told when I go through this process that Lake County is on a special map because of having multiple PSPSs in the past, and that that makes us more likely to obtain these grants from the CPUC. So just wondering if you can speak on that a little bit.
Sure. This is Aaron. I'll speak to the self-generation incentive program. So that is a statewide program that all the big utilities participate in. And that program has, is very focused on getting homeowners and small business batteries for resiliency planning. For community members, there is a strong focus on customers that live in the tier two and tier three areas, as well as customers who may, or may have experienced two or more PSPS events, even if they don't live in those higher fire risk areas. So those customers are prioritized, as well as customers that are on our low-income or care program. And for customers that meet both being on the low-income program and the, or in the tier two, tier three area, the subsidy pays for almost the entirety of the entire battery system. So it is, it is a, a program that people should definitely be taking advantage of. One of the other areas of prioritization is for customers who are on their own well-water systems and need a backup system for water pumping. That's been a big area of feedback where we've gotten, you know, obviously if a fire were to approach, or during those conditions, people want the ability to perhaps defend their own land and their own house. And, and a PSPS could, could obviously eliminate their ability to do water pumping if they don't have their own backup system. So there is a lot of information about the program. It's, 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 it can be a little bit complicated on the criteria, but we have some good, obviously, you can go to pgne.com, SGIP, S-G-I-P, as one area. And then we can have Melinda send over some promotional material that we have for the program, and we would love to partner with you on sharing that through your various channels into the community in Lake County, so that we could get as many folks as we can signed up for that program. There's about $240 million in that program, and about half of it has already been spoken for, as people are rushing to this program. And so we'd love to get that information out sooner and get as many people as we can sign up. It's a really strong resiliency plan, and, and it, it has the potential to avoid, you know, the need for, for diesel backup generators at people's homes by having this technology of batteries. So we'll definitely follow up and make sure we get you some additional material that you can share widely to your constituents.
I appreciate that, and the summary of the program as well. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but currently the customer would have to front the money to pay for the battery, and then eventually get rebate or paid back through the CPUC program, the SGIP program you just described, which could take a few months, sometimes longer, to recoup that money, correct?
I'm going to admit, supervisor, I'm not sure of that. I think we were trying to tackle that issue. That is generally the way our rebate programs work. I know, especially when we're targeting low, lower-income customers with a program like this, that could be a potential challenge, a barrier to participating in the program. So I know we were working on that issue, but I don't know the resolution of that, so we'll have to follow up on that. It's a, it's a good call out.
Right. And I do know that the issue is being worked on, and I'm hopeful to hear very soon, I was actually hoping to hear by now already, but very soon, about a, a sort of revolving loan to help people out to be able to afford those things. And I think that Lake County needs to take advantage. This is a great opportunity. We've been highlighted on the map for this program. So my, my last thing, and I'm going to put you on the spot, and I hope you don't mind, but we just experienced a rolling blackouts. And to me, the difference between a rolling blackout and PSPS, maybe it's a slight nuanced difference, but it's still shutting off our power and turning it back on. And the turning back on of the power seemed to take a different pathway than the PSPS turning it back on, where it seemed to me, and I could be wrong, that there was no line inspection that was necessary to be done prior to turning it back on. But in our scenario, we had power that was shut down for certain areas because of lightning storms, and because of, of power being turned off through natural issues rather than shut down by PG&E. But yet, power was turned back on without the inspection process. So I'm trying to figure out what the difference is, and if there will be a decreased time in turning our power back on, maybe you've learned something new to be able to understand what, where your lines might have problems, just kind of trying to understand the difference, and also if we're going to look at a shorter timeframe to turn the power back on.
Yeah, thank you for the question, and I may, I'm going to answer your question, supervisor, and then I'll see if Jason Regan wants to add any detail, as he was the deputy incident commander over the capacity event. That's a very different event than PSPS, and I think the primary difference, you know, the customer experience may be similar, the loss of power. But for us as operators, it's, it's a different event. In PSPS, we're really worried about damage to the system from the high wind conditions, and, and not knowing what potentially happened to that infrastructure while it was turned off for, you know, frankly, long periods of time. And in, in the capacity event where we had the rolling blackouts, the intent was to turn off the customers for about an hour. We recognize it takes a little bit longer for the power to come back on, and so customers experienced as much as, you know, three or so hours of outage as we sequenced back on that power. But when it's off for that very short duration, and we're not experiencing weather in the area at that time, we're not as concerned about the power coming back on and, and potential damage to our system. So our, our, our turn back on strategy, if you will, is very similar to what we do in winter storms, where we will find damage on a line, and then we will, we will turn back on that line. Once we fix that damage, if the line trips out again, then we continue to patrol and we find any additional damage on that circuit. But you're not facing the same fire risk on the ground, and so, or the potential damage on our system. And that's why there's a very different kind of operating protocol around what, what needs to be done before it's safe to energize. Really with PSPS, the concern is the power's been off for an extended duration, and there's been high wind in the area, and there might be trees or branches in our wires. And that's really what we're looking to patrol for, as opposed to this, where it was really, you know, the whole state didn't have quite enough juice, frankly, to operate the grid. And so that's why we were, we were, you know, doing these short-duration outages to, to sort of balance load and supply and demand on the system. I hope that helps. And Jason, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that explanation.
I just recognize the supervisor's comment. You also mentioned a lightning storm. So this last heat event, lightning storm, and capacity shortfall was just another indicator that 2020 is a challenge for all of us. And there were electrical damages that were seen and repaired due to lightning impacts. There were capacity shortfalls with the rotating outages, and, and, and frankly, there were wildfire damages, maybe not so much in Lake County, but in other areas, that did pose us in our restoration efforts to think through this. Aaron said it well, it's the high winds that lead to catastrophic wildfire and growth of those wildfires. I will say that as we repaired in lightning events, we do take public safety seriously, and, and we do expect a section of damaged line where we have it cleared or grounded for our crews before re-energizing, making sure that we've identified all the damage locations. But supervisor, it's a good, it's a good question, but I think Aaron said it pretty directly that from a public safety power shut-off, it's a different posture relative to emergency response, or really relative to capacity shortfall. But bottom line, at the end of the day, what I'm hearing from you is, are you sure that you're acting safely? And, and I have high confidence in the men and women that are, based on the incident that, that comes our way. And I respect the, the question, the bit of challenge that you, that you had. And being an operator, past operator, and past, and a current leader of, of men and women in our control centers and those in this field, it is something that we do recognize, and we do treat on each case before energizing, that we're ensuring we're not posing a new hazard. But there is a bit, there is a pretty significant difference on the risk level when it comes to PSPS and the requirement we have in our standards to patrol every single section of the circuit. I hope that, at least in fairness, talks a little bit to your ass there.
Hey, that gives me an answer. It sure does. Thank you very much.
Okay, any more questions from the board at this point for PG&E? Supervisor Scott? Go ahead, Supervisor Scott.
Sorry. Just like to thank PG&E for, for this update. You can definitely see they have done some great work this last year to make sure that Lake County will be safer because of fires. They've done a great job trimming the trees and, and making sure that we will have power on if we do have a PSPS event. I don't have any questions, but I would just like to make sure the community is aware that they're looking at these maps, and they can see that, well, I'm in the map, I'm going to have electricity, so I don't have to make sure that I'm prepared. I just want to make sure our community is aware that we don't know what's going to happen with the next PSPS event. You may or may not, even if you are in those mapping areas, correct, that you, you may still lose power. So we still, as a community, need to make sure that we are prepared regardless of where we sit on those maps. Right? Because we could be on those maps saying that we will have power, but it comes down to it, the event is more severe, you know, you don't have power. So I just want to make sure our community is aware that PG&E has done some great work. We're in a much better place now than we were a year ago, but we still need to make sure we are prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott. No, I will, my question, my, my comment will be following up on that. Supervisor Scott, who said, you know, obviously, communication is going to be key throughout this event. Supervisor Scott said people are going to read the maps and get an assumption, and we don't want to let our guard down, as she said, be prepared. But it'll also be very important, as we go through these events this season, that there's good communication from PG&E to get the information out to the customers as efficiently as possible, and, and making sure everybody understands the exact situation we're going through. I know it's going to be easier with the weather stations, it seems like, if the 23 that have been installed will help those decisions being made, but really just want to emphasize the communication part for these events as they come up, that we can get them out to the public through PG&E, and just making sure we're concentrating on that and improving on it this year.
Supervisor Simon, if I, if this is Aaron, if I could speak to that briefly. One improvement that we didn't discuss here, that I think will help your constituency a lot this year, that we got based on feedback, was the text messages, the emails, the auto calls that go out to give the additional indications about the events this year. Last year, we're very general, you know, we may shut off the power, you know. This year, they will be very specific, and they will have information that will both confirm your address, that we're intending to contact, as well as let you know when we expect to turn the power off, and when we expect to turn the power back on. So those will be estimates. They may not end up being perfect, and, but we certainly received a lot of feedback that a much better communication and more specific communication would be really welcome to help folks with their planning. And so all our communications are teed up to be a lot more specific this year to provide that level of detail. Again, you know, it will be challenging to hit those on the exact button, given that we're dealing with weather here and, and field operations, but we really want to do a much better job of setting expectations for the public about what they're going to experience.
Thank you, Aaron. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. Thank you also for, you know, I like seeing Lucerne and Clear Lake Oaks, you know, having different, you know, potential areas. Just wanted to see how far out, and you may have said it, but just in case someone that's listening is wondering, how far out some areas for, you know, the Upper Lake area, the Elk Mountain area, which is a high-risk area, especially during the Mendocino Complex fire, Elk Mountain took some, took some damage, and also the Spring Valley area, how far those areas will be covered in the future? I know that you've done a tremendous job as it is right now, and so I understand that it takes a lot more, but I just wanted to get some, get that answered so that maybe the constituency that's watching you.
John, can you, can you lead in a little bit on that one? I know you're closer to it, and if not, I apologize if I'll have to follow up a little bit more on, and get some of that information. But John, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. And, you know, the short answer there is we did look at the Upper And, you know, the short answer there is we did look at the Upper Lake area and we looked at the Spring Valley area and they were technically challenging, I will say that. And for future years, we are, we are just now evaluating what possibilities exist for 2021 and what kind of work would need to be done in those areas to make those technically feasible. So Upper Lake is on our radar screen. We are paying attention to it and we'll just have to see as we go through our analysis on, on the technical feasibility and the work that needs to be done there, we'll, we'll be able to communicate that more thoroughly as, as we proceed. Our focus is very near term. Our focus is to make sure that we support what we've committed to for this year and then we're moving into future years of evaluation for other areas.
And I would, I would add, as I apologize, I'm tracking a little bit better to the ask here now is that, you know, we're, we're, we're welcome to any feedback, local information, partnering with, with all of you or community or county members or city, city representatives. So, you know, the terrain is really the, the challenge for us here. We know the winds are going to come and environmentally our state is challenged, but it's really about making sure that where we do support alternative power solutions, either through keeping the grid energized safely or microgrid, we got to really respect the risk and the threat that comes along with doing so. So, you know, I would welcome any further conversations or really just continuation of learning based on feedback and we'll look forward to work on it. But to John's point, some of that terrain area has been a bit challenging for us this year. And frankly, we, we've rolled our sleeves up and done, done a lot of work to be better this year, but doesn't mean that we don't have opportunity to continue to grow in future years. So I appreciate the question there.
Thank you. And I'll follow up too with some potential areas for the Blue Lakes area, which is usually doesn't have a resource center and it's pretty far for them to drive to the middle school. And then I'll follow up also possibly with the Spring Valley area. They may need one in the future, but we, of course, can do some further work on that. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the board? If not, we're going to go ahead and open this thing up for public. Supervisor Sabatier?
I mean, it's a silly question, but I just want to ask, do you have any, any potential P S P S insights? I know you have a two-week weather pattern that you look at or anything like that. I haven't heard of anything, just thought I'd ask it.
You know, Aaron, you want me to jump in here a little bit?
Sure.
As Incident Commander for, for the, for the wildfire events, we, we monitor and work with the National Weather Service. Nothing significant on our horizon for next seven days. Seven days is really the, is really where we have the best information. We do have a two-week model that, that can, that can flux a bit and sometimes send us into, into a little bit of, of an unknown territory. What I will say is there's a significant high pressure and heat event coming next week as early as Sunday evening into Monday or as late as Monday afternoon. Relative though to those southerly offshore winds, we're not seeing that in the models that we use or we have vendors with, and we're not hearing it from the, from the National Weather Service. But it will be hot and welcome to September and we recognize that, you know, we're all on our guard here. That's why we've got our emergency center open. So Supervisor, I appreciate the question. Right now, nothing in the forecast relative to that risk and I'd like to help keep it that way, but we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Greatly appreciate everything. I think what we're going to do now is we're going to open this up to the public, but I do have one final comment, just as Supervisor Sabatier noticed, it says December in Middletown, if there's any opportunity to push that a little sooner, greatly appreciate it. But I take that with, thank you for the great work that's been done in other areas. Seems like a lot of our citizens will have an opportunity if weather cooperates in that. So, you know, we're going to go ahead and close it up here from the board level and we're going to open it up to the public for, for questions. And please, it looks like we already have in the Zoom room, we have one hand up and it's Jessica Peiska. Jake, can you get that going?
Yes, I've sent a ME request to her. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, Jessica Peiska.
Great, thank you, we could hear you.
Wonderful. So yes, Jessica Peiska, I serve on the Cobb Area Council, which is in the Cobb area, which is in the tier three level. First, I want to say how much I appreciate the work to get the Little Red Schoolhouse moving along towards being a community resource center. I think that's really important and I hope we can get that all negotiated. I have two other questions, I'll just ask them both at the same time and then you can answer when you'd like. I, the hardening of the line has been a great project this summer. I'm really impressed to see the improvements. I do have a question about the new larger wooden poles versus the composite poles that have been installed and, and how those composite poles are chosen and which location. It seems to be pretty random and I've had conversations with the contractors about that. So I just want a little bit more information on that. And then with the S JIP program, is there any way that we could be more aggressive with the implementation in the tier three areas, particularly this year with distance learning? And is there a plan to get Cobb School backup generation? I know that's one of the only schools that wouldn't have that with the microgrids. And I just wanted to let you know on the P G and E website for S JIP for our area, it does say oversubscribed. I have left messages and have not gotten a call back. This is a really important program for so many of our residents, so I am happy to help facilitate getting more information to the Cobb Area residents through the Cobb Area Council, but I think it's important for all the other tier three areas in the county. Thanks so much.
Okay, I'm not sure who can go ahead, Aaron.
I'll go ahead and, and take a couple of those specifically. I think as John mentioned, we're beginning the planning for 2021 and where there is the potential for additional microgrid work. And so that will certainly be another area that we can put in our planning hopper here as we think about that. And we look forward to some ongoing communications, you know, as the team mentioned, we're hustling right now to put the finishing touches on the work for this year, but also have teams turning and looking to the planning for 2021 as well. You know, I'm not able to speak to the specific locations of where we're choosing composite poles and versus the wood poles. You know, both are in our standard for additional hardened assets, but we can certainly follow up with more information. Jason may have some insight on that. But, you know, I don't, I certainly can't speak to that specific project, but I don't know, Jason, if you can talk about the different criteria at all?
Yeah, I think what I, how I'd answer it is I'd welcome any, any further conversation and we can work directly with, with the person asking the question if they didn't get the right representative or back to this council here. Our hardening efforts are planned about a year in advance. We recognize that over this year, we've learned a lot in our ability to push hardening in the different communities in the right areas, frankly, both internally from feedback from employees, our vendors, and also just the program leaders that run it. So we are evolving. I'm not sure exactly what may or may not have been communicated or some of the questions, but I think frankly, what I'm hearing from you is why are we choosing the locations we are and can I understand a little bit more on, on the intent of the hardening, whether it's pole replacements, whether it's pole wraps, whether it's wire covering, whether it's working from the substation out. We'll recognize that we did have some targeted areas that we've gone back to and looked at and said, you know, in order to truly harden that, we've got to start at the substation out and not necessarily in the actual just tier two and tier three areas. It's one thing to harden a facility, but if I don't have a source to it, then, you know, frankly, just the hardening, provide the value that we were intended. And, and with any, any large program like this, as we evolve, we're learning from it. So frankly, I appreciate your comment. It's in line with some internal feedback we've gotten from the crew, the men and women that are doing the work and also some observations from our regulators and others. So I'm not sure how the best follow-up would be for it, but acknowledging that we are continuing on this hardening area.
So Jessica, I think I'm going to ask Melinda and we'll, we'll circle up because we have a few follow-up items here and make sure that she follows up with you so that we can get you both information on specifically why what poles were chosen in that area and what the criteria we're looking at to help you have better insight there, as well as the other question that I hadn't addressed yet, which is the, the oversubscription issue on S JIP and see what we can do there. So we'll follow up, I have Melinda follow up with you on both of those items. I don't know if you can throw an email address in the chat or, or something of that line, but we'll, we'll certainly, I'm sure you have that, we have that and we can, we can contact you.
Okay, Jake, I don't see any other hands up. Can we open the room here and see if anyone has a comment?
Yes, I will open up the room. I sent a ME request to the Zoom room here. If you would like to make a comment, please start by stating your first and last name.
Hello, I'd like to make a comment.
Hi, yes.
Hello, my name is Carol Cole Lewis of Upper Lake, California. First of all, thank you so much P G and E for the work, Aaron, for the work that you've done to actually help create some resiliency here in Lake County. A statement, I've spent a lot, I am an independent solar consultant and I've spent a lot of time understanding the S JIP program. So if anybody, you're, if any of the supervisors have constituents that are interested in getting solar plus battery systems, I can educate them about the program and can possibly help. I'm at upstartenergy.com. So it's a really important program and not enough people are taking advantage of that equity resiliency budget line. And there is still quite a significant amount of money left in that budget line. It's the general budget line that's oversubscribed. But everybody else should be taking advantage of that, especially our lower income people. I didn't realize the CARE program was eligible. I thought it was just, anyway. So I'm here if you need help and I have some education on my website too.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the room? Any of our directors, anybody, if you have any questions, go ahead and please pose them now? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the room and we'll bring it back to the chambers.
We do have a comment here in the chamber.
John Moss, I'd like to know how this is going to operate in relation to screening for the COVID virus. I don't quite understand the whole concept, but I was at a resource center at the last P S P S and there are quite a few people plugging in their cell phones and talking, et cetera. Thank you.
So if I, if I can address that question, this is Aaron Johnson with P G and E. We are looking to basically follow the protocols that Lake County will give us when and if we need to open a community resource center. So some of the advanced preparations we've made is, you know, obviously we're moving to all these indoor sites. There's going to be metering of people in and out and required mask wearing. If, if the county determines that that's not safe to operate, we will open exclusively outdoor sites, which would be more of a kind of an open area, kind of a drive-through model, if you will, similar to what's been done kind of with the COVID testing facilities. That was some of our model. The idea here is you'd get a bag of snacks, water, a small charging device that would help with phone charging. There would be onsite charging for larger medical devices, but we wouldn't have a whole bunch of charging setup for phones and those kinds of smaller devices just because of the, the social distancing requirements around that. So those are a couple of the different models that we're looking at for. We will on indoor facilities will be, you know, taking temperature before you go in. There's a, you know, Plexiglas shields up for the people that are admitting folks. All of our folks will obviously be wearing masks. We will have extra masks to, you know, we ask people to come with masks, but we will have some extra masks onsite as well for those who don't have one. So we're trying to follow all of the very similar COVID protocols and safety practices that we're seeing throughout different parts of our life right now. And, and again, the bottom line is as we open these facilities, we're going to take our lead from Lake County and whatever requirements you would have in the county and follow those. And so we'll, we'll take our lead there. So hopefully that helps a little bit, ma'am, understand how we'll be thinking about COVID as we try and safely open community resource centers.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, do we have any other comment in the chambers?
No other comments.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. We're going to go ahead and close public comment at this point on this item. We're going to bring it back to the board for any final comments from Board of Supervisors.
I'm good. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yeah, the same here. Thank you very much for hearing Lake County, P G and E. I know we've got a lot of work to do as we move through this and I know you, you guys are really concentrating on it. So we really appreciate the focus on Lake County. It is, you know, obviously always can be improved and we'll team together and work on that as, as we go through this process. But compared to last year to this year, I just want to say thank you very much for hearing us. You know, we're always advocating for our constituents and I want to thank you for P G and E stepping up to the challenge that is P S P S at this point. So thank you.
Thank you for having us and thank you for the partnership on all the land sites, the CRC locations. We couldn't have made the progress we've made this year without that partnership. So thank you very much. We appreciate the support of all your staff.
One, one final comment too, as the L N U fire complex is moving through, I know that there, you guys did have boots on the ground protecting your assets. Protecting your assets is part of protecting our community also. I know that you guys had, saw P G and E fire trucks, fire crews out there protecting your assets, but like I said, once again, it's coordination and collaboration of protecting our community. Also saw cats on the ground cutting for high tension lines and other stuff like that. So just want to thank you in the last event that we just had also from the P G and E standpoint. So.
Thank you, and it's a partnership. And just to make clear that, you know, when we're out doing all that work, we're doing it with clearance from the agency that has jurisdiction. We're not going to go off and, you know, it's got to be a coordinated effort. And so while we have built up those capabilities over the last couple of years, it's making very clear to all our folks on the ground that, you know, we've got to follow the incident command protocols and be a part of that larger incident effort. And so, but thank you for noticing the work and, and we are certainly trying to be a part of that solution to those, those really challenging, those, these fires have just, you know, it's really been something else, right? And so trying to help get power restored as quickly as possible. And that's why our E O C is still open so we can get, you know, restoration done in the areas that have been affected as quickly as possible.
All right, if there are no more comments from the board, we'll go ahead and close this item. I want to thank you P G and E and everyone that's on, from the community. So, and we will work to get that information out that has been provided today. We'll be on the website as far as package. And please, P G and E, if you could work with Melinda and make sure we're getting this information out to our community, we'd greatly appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to our 6.4 item on our agenda for today. The 6.4 item, it's 11:15 a.m. item. It is a presentation of continuing issues regarding treasurer tax collector's office, vote of no confidence in request of resignation of Barbara Ringan. And this was put on by Supervisor Sabatier.
All right, thank you very much. So you will notice on the agenda that an attachment has been uploaded. Basically, I had prepared a presentation and I wanted to make sure to put it as a public of record, in the public record, rather than just speaking and not having it in a written form for folks to follow from. So you may follow, but I, I am going to read it as it was presented in that agenda item as well. So today is the culmination of many meetings.
I don't mean to interrupt, I just want to ask one quick question.
Yeah, Supervisor.
Okay, so we have an item on 8.4 and I, I just want to, you know, I, I trust, I trust you more than I trust me as far as blurting, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we're cognizant of the fact that we're also discussing a, you know, some potential litigation and any statements or comments that could be made in addition to what you've already presented as, as far as the written, any of us, not, not just you, any of us make could be used in or out of context by the opposing council. And I just want to make sure that we're not exposing ourselves to anything there. in or out of context by the opposing counsel and I just want to make sure that we're not exposing ourselves to anything there. So.
And in response to in response to that, I do want to say that I made sure that there was no, what's the word I'm looking for? No crossing over onto that agenda item within the text that I've prepared as I came here individually on my own reasons. We had actually spoken about this about three weeks ago prior to us receiving the item that is item 8.4. And I also would like to suggest that anything that we say anytime, any day that we're here on Tuesdays could potentially be used against us in any way for a court. But I did make sure based on that situation to to ensure that the text that I'm about to read is as safe as possible. And if that
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So again, let me start over. Thank you very much. Today is the culmination of many meetings, a lot of information gathering, as well as many attempts to support and solve many problems that are ongoing in the Treasurer Tax Collector's Department. Please note that this is not a personal agenda and this is not in support of any special interest. The reason I bring this to the board is that the Tax Collector's Office in some way, shape or form impacts everything and everyone in this county, whether it be property taxes that everyone pays or the partnerships with our special districts and the funds that we provide them to help support their service to our communities. This is about the greater good for Lake County and our tax collectors' failure in being that agent that can provide for the greater good. We are here also to ensure that government does what government is asked to do by the people. We need to be held accountable and we should hold others accountable similarly. I will cover five topics and attempt to provide a timeline to show that change has not occurred, no matter what was done. The first topic is delayed deposits, which impact our partner agencies as well as individuals. It has been known for a while that there has been many delays to get checks deposited, sometimes as long as three to six months. In fact, on November 20th, 2018, and I'm going to be referring back to November 20th, 2018 a lot. This is where one of the primary discussions occurred between Ms. Ringan and the board. And I'm sure that many of the issues that were spoken of have been long lasting at that point too. But I will use that as almost a starting point for many of my conversations. In fact, on November 20th, 2018, the question was asked in the response to complaint portion of the agenda item on why it took so long to deposit delayed checks. The answers were staff vacancies, that it was a very busy time period, depends on availability on staff. This begins the number one reason given by Ms. Ringan as to why things are not happening, staffing. And we'll get back to that later, but you'll hear more about those issues that are also blamed on staffing before we finally discuss staffing in general. Ms. Ringan at this time stated that they were obtaining a new TL system of scanning and processing. This was hopeful that this would decrease the potential for checks being delayed. And Ms. Ringan stated that holding checks for longer than 30 days or more would be too long and that if everything is in place, we can have it done in a week. So first portion will be the TID payments that were late that I dealt with. Around May 21st, 2019, I received a call from the TID who was not receiving their first installment of the TID TOT apportionment. TID is the Tourism Improvement District and TOT is the Trans-Transit Occupancy Tax. Board members of the TID complained that checks had been submitted but not yet deposited. The check submitted on April 20th, 2019 was not deposited until May 31st, 2019, 41 days later. The TID members were worried that this would stall their ability to make progress. Other jurisdictions had already submitted their TOT apportionments to the TID, meaning the cities are the other jurisdictions that are part of the TID. I was told verbally this was, this would get done before the week was over when I brought this to the attention of the administration and the tax collectors. This would have been on May 22nd, but it was not accomplished till the following Friday, May 29th, 2019. Next section, and I'll take questions at the end. I'd like to finish up my little speech that I've prepared, if that's okay with everybody. Next section, investment interest payout delay. We spoke a little bit about this last week about the investments. Each month, we receive interest from our investments and these investments on a quarterly basis are divided up for our local taxing entities. We are consistently late on getting those deposits into our systems so that we can send the appropriate amount to each entity. In our 2018 single audit, this was found to be a deficiency and continues to be a deficiency as of today, where the third quarter has still yet to be submitted to our county partners who are waiting for these amounts, third quarters, January through March. In the report, it states the following. Condition. While performing the audit, we determined that the county treasury cash and investment reconciliation did not reconcile to the amounts reported in the bank and investment statements provided by financial institutions. As a result, cash and investments were understated at June 30th, 2018. Context. As of the date we performed audit procedures on February 4th, 2019, the county treasury had not provided a cash and investment reconciliation that agreed to the cash and investment statements as of June 30th, 2018. We did not receive sufficient information to reconcile cash and investment statements until March 18th, 2019. That's almost nine months later. Effect. As a result, cash and investments was understated by approximately $900,000 at June 30th, 2018. Additionally, not reconciling cash and investments on a timely basis could lead to material misstatements as well as create the opportunity for fraudulent transactions to go undetected. When I looked through the HTE Nova Line Accounting Finance System, this shows me that in the past year, we have averaged 150 days from the date of posting to the actual date of processing, meaning the money is there, but the money has not been allocated specifically to those who would receive the money to be able to allocate it to their budgets. 150 days. In the past, between five to 15 years ago, looking at every five years, the average was 59 days. That's almost three times less, the number of days. Moving on to excess proceeds from tax sales. On November 20th, 2018, Ms. Ringan stated that it takes 1.5 years to process excess proceeds. One full year based on R and T code 4675 for individuals or entities to file a claim for those excess proceeds and approximately six months of internal work to finalize and send out the payments. On June 25th, 2019, this board approved of excess proceeds from a tax auction that was done on June 9th, 2017. This took two years to accomplish, approximately six months more than anticipated. On January 14th, 2020, the board approved of excess proceeds from a tax auction done in 2005. This took 14 years to accomplish, 12.5 years more than anticipated. On July 21st, 2020, this board approved of excess proceeds from a tax auction that was done on June 9th, 2017. This took three years to accomplish, 1.5 years more than anticipated. This board has discussed a sensitive issue of selling other people's properties due to being delinquent in property taxes. Our preferred avenue is compliance. However, if we are forced to sell their properties, we do so. Why are we not being sensitive to the funds we acquire from the sale to get them to those who submit timely claims? If it wasn't for the administration and myself pushing the tax collector to get this last item on the July 21st, 2020 meeting agenda, how much longer might it have taken? Already, it was promised to be on the July 7th, 2020 agenda, but no word, no agenda item, delayed again, and lack of communication. We had received an email from a gentleman who was desperate to finalize this process. His mother had passed away after her house was auctioned. She never received the proceeds. He submitted a claim and stated to having little to no communication back from the tax collector and that he didn't have the time to keep fighting this as he was an active duty Army soldier and did not have time for the amount of effort that was required of him to resolve this. Again, it took an extra year and a half to finalize this. Delays are ongoing and have gone on for too long and have potential impacts to both individuals and county and its partners. Inability to implement new taxes or enhance the collection of current taxes. The Tax Collector's Office is our main point of revenue. It is important that we collect as close to all of the taxes due to us so that we can serve our communities the best we can. This includes property taxes, TOT taxes, and now cannabis taxes. Cannabis taxes, Measure C. Ms. Ringan has been very hands off when dealing with the cannabis tax and has barely made her meetings when discussing its implementation or its changed nuances on how to ensure it is correctly processed. In fact, it is an individual in the administration's office that was hired to help with finding the issues as well as some of the changes needed to ensure proper application of the tax. While researching the cannabis tax to ensure it was done properly, I found that Ms. Ringan is not involved other than sending out the bills, but also not involved with creating the process in which the bills would be submitted and insured are appropriate. Transit occupancy tax, Airbnb style rentals. In just a few months of work, a new revenue of close to $150,000 was found and added to our general funds. This is due to hiring an additional staff mentioned earlier to help research this and put it together. While many counties were struggling with the same situation, our situation was made worse by operating off an obsolete list of potential businesses who would pay TOT to sending bills without the follow-up. Property taxes, better collection method. As we will learn in a later agenda, there is more than $20 million of potential property taxes, penalties, interest, and more to collect on all properties that are delinquent from one year or more. This has been an issue brought to the board since November 20th, 2018, possibly before. This is a lot of money to collect and the only way to collect it is by people paying off their properties or us selling their properties via tax sale. Complete lack of communication to the status of tax auctions, even though it has been very apparent that it is important to the board to have tax auctions at least annually. On September 17th, 2019, Ms. Ringan was invited to discuss the next upcoming tax auction. We were told it would be in March 2020. On February 25th, 2020, Ms. Ringan requested for the board's approval for a tax auction sale to be held May 29th through June 2nd. This shows a 60-day delay at least in getting the tax sale prepared. We were told then that it would take 75 days after being approved by the board for the auction to occur. On May 12th, 2020, we postponed the tax auction and now, and I will add a little bit that it was recommended by the state and I agreed with the postponement of the auction, so this is not something to hold against her. And now we have not had a tax auction in 1819 and now 1920. In fact, we've only had two tax sales since 2013, meaning in the past six years, two tax sales. Delays may have cost our county due to the auction being possible to have in March. There was no recommendation from the state until later, but not possible to have it in May-June. We were told that the auction would be postponed to October 2020. Today is September 1st, 2020, and if it was on our board's agenda today for approval, the auction would not happen until at least November 15th. No agenda item has been submitted for future agendas as of yet for the tax auction to come back. And no new properties have been added according to the Tax Collector's Office if the auction was to occur this fall. This has an impact on direct charges, an impact on our general fund when TEADER transfers funds due to penalties and fees and interest being paid. On 2/25/2020, a TEADER presentation was given to us by our auditor controller. Our TEADER transfer to our general fund has been as high as 3 million and as low as less than 1 million. It is important for us to keep that up. Inability to problem solve the issues of the department, whether through creative staffing strategies or the addition of technology. On November 20th, 2018, the very things that were problems then are still problems today at the department. I place responsibility on our tax collector. Not once have I seen her requesting for more staff allocations. I have seen our registrar voters, our code enforcement, and our sheriff come to us with special requests and creative ideas on how to recruit and retain the staff they require to serve the public and accomplish their goals. I have not seen Ms. Ringan once letting us know what her needs are, other than telling us that staffing is a problem for her in order to meet her expectations. I hear it so much that I believe it to be an issue of it being used as an excuse for not showing the proper outcomes, rather than actual, actually it truly being a staffing issue. The only time this conversation came up publicly on how to solve staffing was when the ad hoc committee with the administration came back to the board saying we need to add staff specifically to help with tax auctions. I will detail to you why I see staffing as an excuse and not a truth later in this presentation. I will also provide examples of how technology is not being used appropriately to allow staff to work more efficiently, reducing the need for more staff or the need to use staffing as an excuse. Technology. On November 20th, 2018, Ms. Ringan stated that she had obtained a TL system of scanning and processing and would help solve the delayed checks problem. Yet I've provided evidence earlier in this presentation that delayed checks still persist. I'm getting word from both staff and applicants that it is taking hours right now to count cannabis tax coming in. We need technology. New technology can help solve these inefficiencies so we can get more work done. Based on California County Tax Collector's Reference Manual, page 30, section 1230, it states that we should be allowed to receive partial payments for property taxes. However, section 1231 states that if we do receive partial payments, that we must place them in a sorry, section 1231, and I forgot to add this in there, if we are part of the TEADER plan, that we, if we do receive partial payments, we must place them in a trust and immediately notify the assessee of the deficiency so they can take care of the deficiency. We do not hold them in trust, or do we tell the assessee of the deficiency? In fact, I worked to fix this issue with Mayor Russ Kramer of Clear Lake, whose check was held for three months due to not it not equating to the correct total amount. And then he received a new bill with a delinquent fee and more and was forced to appeal. This creates more work than being more efficient in the work we need to get done. If we can receive partial payments due to a payment plan, then we can enter a partial payment if we do not have to allow follow section 1230 or 1231 that I stated earlier. But if we do, then why are we not putting their money in a trust and alerting them that they have underpaid? For our county struggling to obtain the revenues that we require to adequately serve the public, why would we so easily not deposit checks or just send them back? Staffing, not an issue. One would think that hiring would be an important part of the tax collector's job to ensure that she fills the positions needed based on the amount of comments that this is due to staffing. In the last two years, there have been eight failed recruiting efforts and four successful ones. The average number of applicants for the failed one was seven, which shows that she at least had an opportunity to find somebody and not had minimal amount of applicants. The average time it took for the final cancellation of the hiring process for these failed recruiting processes was 52 days. The average for those that ended up with a hire was 26 days. If it takes you twice as long, maybe that's why we're seeing failed recruiting processes. And this is based on when an eligibility list was provided to the department head, where people were either hired or the hiring process was canceled. For some of these examples, other departments hired those same applicants while those applicants were waiting for the tax collector to get back to them. Currently, an eligibility list was provided to Ms. Ringan on May 1st, 2020. No action has been taken. Today is September 1st. It has been four months where no action has been taken, where staffing is supposedly an issue. Yet staffing is a huge issue is the common reason we are told for why these problems persist. On 2/25/2020, during mid-year budget review, we approved of one new staff member provided to Ms. Ringan specifically to help with tax defaults and tax auctions. While originally this was approved by all parties, recently this staff member was refused to be used for such work. So again, almost two months time to hire someone in a competitive market, no action since May 1st, 2020 on choosing from the eligibility list to hire someone, and the refusal of help when provided. How is staffing a problem when the actions show no true urgency to obtain the staffing needed? Number four, inability to follow through and make the necessary changes to make progress in mitigating the problems of the department. On November 20th, 2018, Ms. Ringan stated she would come back and report to us on the things she stated she would report back to us. Mostly investments and things of the kind. This report has never come, just like the majority of the things that she said she would solve, enhance, or report on. This is an ongoing theme to tell us that what we want to hear and not do, that an ongoing theme to tell us what we want to hear and not do what she needs to do. Number five, inability to trust that change will occur in a meaningful way or that the answers we are given are honest or truthful. It is due to the fact that the same problems from November 20th, 2018 are continuing to occur that we created an ad hoc committee to do our best to support the tax collector and resolve some of these issues. At times, the tax collector is there, but has not offered or taken any action to help with resolving the problems we discuss. Too often, administration and other departments have to take the lead in these discussions or deal with issues themselves because they are not being handled by the tax collector. We are enabling Ms. Ringan to continue to be paid and not change the outcomes of her work. There are times when we bring things back to the board, such as last week's Investment RFP and Oversight Committee, which we've been waiting since November 20th of 2018, and she doesn't show up to these meeting agenda, to these agenda items. This provides the perception that she doesn't care and I define to say that she doesn't, or else she would be more engaged in solving the problems and making excuses for them. In November 20th, 2018, we were told that staff was being trained for the investment properties. Has this training occurred? Based on my findings and conversations, it does not appear that anyone has been trained to handle our investments other than Ms. Ringan. Was this wrong information provided to us then? In the November 2018 discussion, Ms. Ringan stated that she would add quarterly reports on her website for investments and that we would receive these as the board level as well as an annual report. None of these things have ever happened. It is as if that meeting never occurred and Ms. Ringan never responded to the board. Much of the follow-up by the ad hoc committee has been progressing due to work done by IT and admin staff, not the tax collector or her office. New information not provided to the public, grand jury, board, or ad hoc committee has been produced through this work. I'm uncertain of the truth of this new information, but it is of concern that this information was never provided to us. Even as we discuss specifics of tax defaults, it wasn't until recently that historical books were found to be stored in storage with more tax defaults, though they may not add new properties, would potentially add more funds owed to the county and its partners, some potentially as old as 1956 through the 90s. Yet Ms. Ringan, in replying to the grand jury report, stated, "I agree that it is the duty of all elected officials to exercise extreme prudence in carrying out their respective official duties. If information is released in the course of carrying out the official" If information is released in the course of carrying out the official duties of the treasurer or tax collector, professional due diligence would be taken with regards to the research and verification of the information prior to its release." Yet no knowledge of these historical books by either us or the grand jury. Omission is a type of lie and my trust in Ms. Ringan has been depleted, and my belief that change will come has been depleted as well. She is not fit to execute her duties as elected by the people of Lake County, and I request her resignation so that Lake County can be better served to move into the future. We all need to be held accountable. Thank you for listening, and again, on the document that is uploaded, I have sources for the material that I've provided for you.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. Any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Scott?
Is Ms. Ringan with us today?
Didn't uh
See her in the room, but I did ask Jake a few minutes ago to do you see her in the room, Jake? You were double checking?
Uh, yeah, I was looking for her. She has not joined the Zoom meeting.
Unless she is not identified, you could ask her if she's here, Monk?
Yeah, uh, I didn't see her either. I was looking for that Barbara Ringan. Are you in the room on the phone? No, I would That's obviously a no at this point. Jake, um
I do have one, um, I only have one person participating via phone. Um, I sent that individual unmute request just to check in and see if that is Barbara Ringan.
Barbara, if you are here, please let us know. And if she's not here, you know, I would, would hope that we could get it, you know, a message and, you know, I know she's probably seen the agenda. Um, she's not here at this point, but uh
And just for full transparency, I did have a conversation, though a short conversation with her on Thursday to let her know this would be on the agenda.
All right. Thank you very much, Supervisor. Okay, um, obviously I don't think she's on at this point. Any more questions or comments from the board?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
I appreciate the work. You know, I've been there, Bruno. This is, there's nothing fun about something like this. It's, it, I definitely don't want to discourage your, I told you this earlier, your desire to hold people accountable. I've been there. I've been there by myself. When we've had former D A committing felonies that were, so I, I get it. I know exactly what you're, what you're dealing with, and I know you didn't do, you're not doing this because of any devious or ill intent. Your intents are, I'm sure, good. When did we add the cannabis? Here, here's the thing that, my observations, and they're definitely, you know, I haven't done the research that you've done. You've done a lot of work here. But the thing that, the thing that I've noticed and been struggling with, not with just this department, but with a lot of them, is, you know, we always think that we can do better, including our, our office, but because we just keep getting stuff thrown at us, one thing after another. And, you know, it's, when you can't keep up and then you get something else stacked on top of it, that's all of a sudden a priority, especially from the board. It just, it starts becoming overwhelming. Again, I'm not trying to make excuses. I'm trying to offer reasons in my own mind as to why, why we would get behind in any department. And adding the cannabis was a huge thing, over and above. Um, so I'm curious as to the timing of that. Are you aware?
I believe, uh, twenty eighteen, January first is when that was allowed as far as the collection of it, when it started. I would suspect that probably started in, after June, uh, because it was a very short, uh, small amount that was collected that first year.
Okay. And, and I
Granted, I agree that the first time on anything is probably the most arduous.
Yeah, it was, and because it became, it was a priority for the board at the time. And, um, for the majority of the board, I should say, I, I've, I've said, you know, we don't have, we can't get done with what we have, let alone add one more thing that, that we're going to do. And then the T O T Airbnb became a, another priority that the board had. Um, what is the staffing level there currently? What, what is it right now?
So they are staffed for, I believe, either ten people and have nine, or eleven people and have ten. Uh, they do have some extra help to, uh, fill some of those positions.
So they're down by one and what about?
About a year ago, it was exactly the same, except maybe there was one less full timer and one extra, uh, help person, but it was still one off.
Yeah, and I know, okay, so having staffing level, actually, that's not bad. That's, you know, if there's ten and there's only nine there or not nine and eight, neither one of those are really bad in comparison to some of the other departments, but then it comes down to experience level of, you know, and turnover. So that's the, uh, that's the other issue that, that you have to deal with too. And, and I know that, um, you know, when, you know, COVID came around, we were working right on, we were right in the middle of working on our, um, actually weren't in the middle of it, we were at the end of it.
Some of those positions, down by one and what about?
About a year ago, it was exactly the same, except maybe the I'm hearing myself.
Yeah, we're, we're replaying. I don't, I don't, I don't want to live this the first time, let alone relive it, so.
Yeah.
So the, uh, class and comp, we did the survey and we were getting ready to implement this and based on the information that I, that I have, and it's just close, it would have been ninety one thousand dollars to that department for, um, for staffing increases, not, not increases in staffing, but increases in pay that would help with the turnover that ultimately helps with, you know, keep getting things caught up. Now, the tax sale issue, having one in March would have been, we would have avoided the COVID issue. Nobody knew that was coming. But now that we have that, um, you know, and a lot of it has to do with the actions of this board, we can't have a sale. We can't plan on a sale, even in the future, until this is over with. We were, we can't say, can't Dr. Pace telling us, we don't want to encourage people to come in from out of county, yet then on a tax sale, you're going to have people come in from out of county. And then when we're focusing on properties that are in areas where there's the highest level of COVID activity, that has to be taken into consideration. So, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're we're factoring in all of these things. And again, I'm not, I'm not here to make excuses. I'm, I'm just here to say, you know, we've got, um, you know, we've got a future ahead of us that doesn't look too good in terms of what we can plan on as far as COVID, COVID goes and, um, increases to salaries and benefits to employees that will reduce the turnover, but I think those are factors that need to be considered.
And I will repeat one thing I said, which is that some of the failed recruitments, some of those recruits were hired by other departments for the same category of position, which means they started at the same pay.
Yeah, and I, I'd probably have to read that again because I wasn't following you totally in that. I, I, I've got basically your, your point in that, but the, I'd have to, I'd have to read that again to see what the issue was as far as the recruitment and that, because, um, I know some departments do things differently as far as recruitment goes, but I think most of that goes through H R, so.
Right.
That's not really the department that
And the timeline was spent post-H R submitting all the information to the department heads to run with it.
Okay.
I will let you know that I, I think Barbara is in the room at this point. Barbara, are you, uh, in the room or on the line, on the phone?
Looks like she's connecting to audio.
So, uh, it does look like Barbara has joined via Zoom. Uh, I'm trying to confirm a, an audio connection for her.
Are we a hundred percent? She's not the, uh, two phones?
Uh, no, we did have one phone join slightly after, and that was actually, um, echoing uh, that you guys experienced earlier. Um, so I, but I, I sent a mute request to check in with that, that phone user.
All right, once we have that confirmed, uh, that she is on, um, any more discussion from any other board members? Okay, Supervisor Crandall, and then I'll go to you, Supervisor Scott.
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier, I want to thank you for your work on this. I know we've discussed this many of times, especially when it, in regards to the North Shore, um, specific to areas like Nice, Listerne, Clear Lake Oaks. Um, these areas suffer from blights, waters and property owners who are not accountable for their properties. We have a shortage on salaries and the twenty million dollars you explained could go to these problem areas with retention and recruitment in many different facets in the county. Um, so, you know, these auctions, you know, they could get done if they were provided, could provide potentially better owners with pride rather than allow properties to diminish. Um, I have to try and input this one, because I, like, for example, I had a meeting on Sunday with a group of people from Nice who live next to Met, a group that has a property that's diminished with Met users. And, you know, I'm not saying, I say that this is a potential overlapping issue. I'm not saying it's the only issue, but I, I have to explain to the and that these, these auctions that aren't done are situations that, that you're explaining that provide, um, why this type of stuff happens. Um, so just wanted to say again, thank you for your work on this.
Okay, Supervisor Scott?
I guess I have a question. I, I noticed, I believe it was last week or the week before, there was a, there was a list published in the Record B of, of, uh, properties that were going to be going up for tax sale. So does she need to come back to the board? Because I was already
A group that has a property that's diminished with Met users and, you know, I'm
Jake, can we, can you, does Barbara have audio yet?
She has audio. She was the one that was echoing. She just needs to turn off her speakers when she's speaking.
That is correct.
So Jake, will you give her another unmute request?
Okay, Supervisor Scott?
I guess I have a question. I, I noticed, I believe it was last week or the week before that was there was a list published in the Record B of, of, uh, properties that were going to be going up for tax sale. So does she need to come back to the board? Because I was already
And you guys are doing that without moving your lips. I don't know. That's, that's amazing.
Yeah, we keep getting, yeah, we keep getting the, uh, the echo here.
Barbara, if you can hear us, you need to mute the device you have playing near you audibly, and then we won't have that echo. So mute the device you have playing in the room with you and then unmute yourself so you can speak. Okay. Monk, she looks good. Go.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Barbara. Must still be having complications.
Center
Yeah, she's in the courthouse. Maybe she could just come down to the boardroom?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, finally worked it out. That took a little bit of energy.
Thank you for joining us, Barbara. Uh, I know the final question, Supervisor Scott had just posed a question about a list that was posted of, uh, tax sale, um, how auction, tax sales for the auction that were posted in the Record B. Is that what you said, Tina?
Yeah, it was either last week or the week before. I, I was going to read it, but then my children threw it away.
Yeah, so that was just a tax delinquency list of parcels that had been delinquent for three years. Um, just trying as a, as, other than sending our delinquent notices, that's another way of notification to contact them, to let them know they have delinquent taxes. Um, they're still two years away from being eligible for a tax sale.
Okay. Give me the clarification.
Barbara, I don't know if you had been listening to the meeting before you got on the meeting. I didn't know if you are, um, you know, prepared to, uh, you know, answer any questions or, um, I just don't know how much you, you heard of the meeting, um, of our conversation to this point.
Okay, um, well, I did have a, um, prepared statement based on the few questions that I saw on the agenda item. Uh, um, but Bruno brought up, um, a, a lot more that, um, questions and points that, um, I didn't have prior knowledge of, and I would like to respond to that, but I would like a fair chance to respond to you, so I won't be able to do that today. But I would like to respond to those, um, uh, questions that Bruno, um, did, um, ask.
Okay, so those are extra items, uh, but you said you had a statement at this point or you would like to hold on?
I can, I can still, um, do that prepared response. Um, it's kind of brief as far as, uh, uh, the details that Bruno was asking about, but, um, the first question that he had or statement, he said delayed deposits which burden our partner agencies as well as individuals. Um, and at this time, um, we're not aware of any continuous problem as our office has not received any complaints directly, um, that would cause a burden on our partner agencies. Um, our property taxes, uh, if I can just go over a little bit of the items that we do collect, um, of course, it's the property taxes. Um, in the last few months, there have been some COVID nineteen related delays, but those have only been recently. Taxing agencies, um, receive the amount they're levied through TETER, which is also, which also has set distribution dates. Um, during our busy tax season, there is a slight delay in processing tax payments um, because of, at this time, each piece of mail does have to be opened and reviewed to ensure the payment is correct. Payments that are made out correctly and have no issues are then processed in batches through our scanning system on a daily basis during peak times. Um, peak times, um, are the months of December and April. Um, for any payment that is incorrect or has issues, it is placed in our problem box until after all the timely mail is opened and processed. Um, a let, a letter is then written to the taxpayer indicating the problem and allowing them ten days to respond for their payment to be considered timely. Um, taxpayers also have the option of paying online or pay through our, our, through our automatic phone system, which will post, um, the same day that they make that payment. Um, the cannabis, so the cannabis is billed annually and it's due in two installments based on permits approved as of June thirtieth. Um, the due dates for those installments, August thirtieth and December thirtieth. Uh, permits that are approved after June thirtieth are billed the following month with a due date of thirty days. Then the second installment is, stays the same at December thirtieth. Um, payments we do receive, um, from that are deposited the following day. Um, the T O T, um, T I D, um, that is billed quarterly with the due date thirty days after the quarter ends. Uh, payments are deposited, um, right now within thirty days, um, of the billing cycle. Um, and this will continue to improve with our T O T module that we recently added. Um, that is going into effect, um, this next quarter, I believe, that we're finally working through the details on that. Um, while we have explained our processes, we know we can accomplish our processes in a more effective manner. If we had additional staff that are both qualified and experienced. We realize it is difficult to fill positions though, due to the salaries being offered at this time. Um, the next section was inability to implement new taxes or enhance the collection of current taxes. Um, the only new taxes that our office has implemented, um, that we're of right now is the cannabis cultivation tax, which the creation of the tax billing was implemented by our department. We do work closely with admin regarding any issues that come up regarding the square footage being billed. Um, we collect and track all the cannabis collections. Um, the tax billing for the cannabis is generated based on information provided by the permitting department. If the permit holder disagrees with the amount due, a revised bill, tax bill can only be issued when a square footage adjustment is processed by the permitting department. This last two thousand nineteen, twenty tax, um, season, the December tenth, two night, two thousand nineteen tax payments were all opened and reviewed by December twentieth, two thousand nineteen. The April tenth, twenty twenty, took a little longer to process because we also had to take into consideration, um, the COVID nineteen penalty cancellation request that we received, and we received over seven hundred that we processed. The inability to problem solve the issues of the department, whether through creative staffing strategies or the addition of new technology. Um, new technology does take time to research and implement. Um, with the current staff resources, this has been a difficult process. R T L is our payment processing system. We have been successful in reducing our payment processing with this We have been successful in reducing our payment processing with this RTL payment processing scanning system. It scans both the checks in this payment stubs and then posts them directly into the megabyte tax system. Prior to this, um, all payments had to be hand posted into megabytes. We have started also to cross train staff in our other divisions in order to assist in the process of payments as well as sending out the letters for our payments that have issues. Um, we are on our eighth recruitment for our accountant position, which was previously offered to three candidates. All three candidates declined due to the salary. It takes three to five years to become proficient if you are hired with experience. This timeframe is increased to five to seven years if the candidate is hired without experience. The skills required for our positions do not directly exist in private industry and have to be trained on the job. Our current pay has made the search for relevant skills more difficult. Um, this past fiscal year, we did purchase the TOT module, which will allow for operators to fill their returns online and pay by credit card. The fiscal, this fiscal year, we will be working on our check scanning vendor, with our check scanning vendor to implement the check 21 process, which creates an electronic file of checks, which will be sent to the bank for processing. This will allow checks to be cashed the day after they deposited versus several days. Um, inability to follow through and make the changes, necessary changes to make progress in mitigating the problems of the department. Um, we have tried our best with what we have to mitigate the problems of our department. Due to the skill set and accuracy needed in our department, it has been difficult to fill our positions with current pay as stated in the previous question regarding recruitment. Um, inability to trust that change will occur in a meaningful way or that answers we are given are honest and truthful. Meaningful change will be difficult to occur until we have additional qualified and experienced staff. And the only way I can see this occurring is when our salaries and benefits are increased to attract qualified applicants. Um, and as far as answers being truthful and honest, I try my best to give accurate information with the information I have at the time. It is never my intention to give inaccurate information. Um, the ability to, to cross train staff. Sorry, I missed, I skipped a paragraph. So I, I think, um, that completes what I had to say at this time, but I would like the opportunity to come back to, um, answer or respond to, uh, Bruno's question.
Okay. Barbara, thank you very much for joining the meeting, giving that statement. Um, any more questions, uh, from the board? Comments for Barbara? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open this item up for, uh, public comment. I see we do have one hand up. We will start with the, uh, virtual room, the Zoom room, and then we'll bring it back to board chambers. So Jake, let's work through the hands up. I see two at this point. Uh, go ahead, Jake.
All right. The first hand we have up here is from Melissa Fulton. Melissa, I've sent you an unmute request. All right. Looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, Melissa Fulton, CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, and I was, uh, glad to hear that there is a tentative date for a sale in November, I believe, which hopefully will be, uh, will be able to go ahead. I only wanted to comment that, uh, last week I was in communication with Bid for Assets, the company that the county contracts with to perform these sales. And even with COVID, uh, because so much of the, uh, so many of the transactions are done online, um, that it is possible, even with the pandemic, to hold these sales. So hopefully this sale will go forward. Um, we desperately need them and at this rate, and I don't fully understand, obviously, everything that goes into preparing for these sales, but if we could even ramp up, given the, um, lack of sales we've had now for such a long time, if we could ramp up to hold four sales in 2021, I think that would greatly benefit everyone, both the, both of the cities as well as uh, the county and all of the people involved. Thank you for your time and, um, I'll keep my fingers crossed for that sale.
Supervisor Shabatier?
I just want to clarify, uh, I mentioned that if we had approved a tax sale today, it would not happen until November 15th due to the 75 day, um, waiting period that needs to happen. There has not been any approval or, um, anything brought to the board at this moment in time. So there is no November tax sale unless things change.
All right. Thank you, Bruno, for the clarification, but you know me, I'm the eternal optimist, so maybe December.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, next, uh, name up is Michael Green.
Uh, Michael Green, I've sent you a unmute request. Looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
I'm Michael Green. Just, uh, speaking out against, uh, this attempt for a vote of no confidence. Um, definitely not warranted, uh, despite the eight-page manifesto, uh, basically documented a communications breakdown, definitely with the ad hoc committee, and I guess that speaks more to the ad hoc committee process than necessarily the office. Um, some isolated issues of concern, and then of course, the big issue, the big elephant is the tax default auctions. Uh, and, and I'm confused at this point whether you're speaking more as a supervisor or carrying water for the city of Clear Lake on that. Um, I will just say that the tax default auctions, although they are required, it's like many things required under state law. It's an unfunded state mandate. If you drill deep into that, there's no sanction available against the treasurer tax collector for failure to perform. Uh, but if the city of Clear Lake, for example, wanted to push that, litigation would be the appropriate way to do that. They could seek a petition for writ of mandate to compel performance without, uh, doing something as meaningless as a vote of no confidence on this. Uh, staffing is raised as a concern. Guess what? She already said, uh, the salaries are an issue. Staffing in general for all types of government during the COVID-19 crisis has been very problematic. So I'm not really, uh, convinced by the, uh, uh, the staffing effort so far that that particular thing has not been followed. Uh, and ultimately, it's really not up to the board of supervisors to render judgment on her performance. She is an elected office holder. So it's on the voters of Lake County to render judgment on her performance or lack thereof. And they can do that if she chooses to run again in 2022 as soon as that. But I just don't see anything and anything that's been reported by either the city of Clear Lake or yourself today that would support, uh, taking this action. I hope you just rejected, rejected today. Uh, and then finally, I'll just go to the Grand Dairy report that said, basically, long story short, the citizens of Lake County are being as well-serviced by the treasurer tax collector's office as can be reasonably expected. And I concur with that finding and I would ask the board to reject this, uh, approach today. Thank you.
Okay, Jake, I don't see any other hands up at this point in the virtual room. Can you please, uh, unmute the room for anyone who would like to make comment on this item?
Yes, I will unmute the Zoom floor here. I've sent a unmute request to all participants. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Hello, my name is Shawna Larson.
Hi, yes, we can hear you.
Great. Um, thank you for hearing me today. I just want to support the vote of no confidence. Something needs to be done and clearly this person in the position of leading the team is not capable of doing so. I am a property owner in Clear Lake and I've been trying for almost three years to buy a lot that is adjacent to my property. That has been abandoned. It is supposed to be coming up on a tax sale and I've been on bid for assets month after month, but it's never there. People dump their garbage there and this is a common occurrence all over Clear Lake because of these forgotten pieces of property. I don't believe it would bring in people from out of the area, but not that that would be such a bad thing because they would care about it. They are spending their money and they would care about it. Right now it looks like no one cares about it. So I would really like to see some change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, are there any, any other, uh, public comment on this item? The room is open? Okay, Jake, uh, hearing no other comments, uh, from the room, we'll go ahead and close the, uh, virtual Zoom room and we'll bring it back to board chambers. If there's any comment in the board chambers?
There is a public comment at the board chambers.
Excellent. Please state your first and last name.
Joan Moss. I would very much agree that, that there's a breakdown in communication. I believe that Ms. Ringan should have received what you're going to say today so that she can answer it and look at it and study it. Um, obviously there needs to be work on this and we're all in this together. I would hope that, that the county and Ms. Ringan would honor the law that Michael Green urges you to do. And I hope the things improve. I'm glad that you got to say how you feel. You've really worked hard on this. And, um, I just want things to be a little bit more fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
And that is the only comment in the public here in the boardroom.
Hearing no more public comment on this issue? Go ahead and bring it back and we'll double check and. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close it up. We're going to bring it back to, uh, our board for, um, for action. This is a requested action item. Supervisor Shabatier?
So I feel I need to say something else before moving on. Um, number one, this is not at all a attack on the person, Ms. Ringan, as she is a very kind and, and sweet person, um, as far as her personality goes. I feel that we are in our place in specific positions to do a specific role when it comes to our job. Not who we are as individuals, but what we need to do as far as our job. I feel that we talk constantly about our issues of being able to afford things. And I also believe that she is the integral part of being able to afford things. So the idea that we need to pay people more, but not necessarily change how things are happening right now, when for almost a year and a half, I've been trying to make change and have seen nothing. It seems like either we're having a chicken or egg conversation, or there's not a level of understanding that solving certain problems can really help create a better situation for us to be dealing with. I also want to really, um, um, spotlight the issue is not a county agency issue. It's an issue of water districts. It's an issue of fire districts. It's an issue of school districts who are all on the same tight budget as we are. And when we're not providing the level of, uh, interest payments that they should be receiving until almost 90 days later, 70 days later versus on time, we are putting them in a situation that they don't need to be in. It, we, we, we are at the top and things trickle down. And we need to make sure that we do what we can because we impact and affect everybody from the quality of our communities to the quality of the services from agencies that are not a part of us, but who are receiving funds through us. And again, I go back to that November 20th conversation. What exactly has changed when I provided examples to show that these things still occur? And, and that's what I wanted to just state. This, this is again about a specific role, not a specific person. And, and while yes, I agree, we do not have the power to say you're done. I, I do have the power to say that I don't approve of what's going on, which is why I'm coming to this board. Because if I don't come to this board with this, it means I approve of what's going on. And I can't because I'm not seeing the change and I'm not seeing the effort to change and I'm hearing things, but I'm not seeing things. And I need to see things. We need to see things. Our community is waiting for us to see change. And we need to, we need to provide that to them. And I think that we, if we're not getting that change with what we have, then we need to look at moving around the chairs on the deck and, and that, that's my belief.
Thank you, Supervisor Shabatier. Any more comments, uh, from board members? Supervisor Scott?
Um, just I do believe we need to give, uh, Ms. Ringan the opportunity to be able to answer some of the questions that came up today, um, in this, in this long, um, paper that, that Bruno wrote. So I, I, I do believe we need to give her that, that time. Um, and then while we have her here, is she working on a tax sale? Is that something that's going to be happening soon that you're going to be bringing us, bringing to the board so we can continue moving in that direction?
Hey Barbara?
Hi, yes, we are still working on a tax sale. Um, it is a tight line, tight timeframe for November, but we are still anticipating doing, uh, having one in November. So, and if not, um, we will just have a larger one later in the year. We'll either have the two or a larger one, um, later in the fiscal year, but we are still, um, attempting to have one for November.
Okay. I will speak on, on behalf, um, the ad hoc committee that currently consists of Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Shabatier. Um, you know, I was on that, uh, committee. I know that there were multiple meetings that were had with, uh, the tax collector. Uh, some of the issues that were brought up by Supervisor Shabatier have been talked about, uh, since, um, my time on the board, uh, as far as addressing tax sales, uh, which, which I know, um, are continuing conversation. But there are other issues that, that were raised, um, about, uh, the timeliness of deposits, uh, you know, that were sent into tax collector's office. Ultimately, we always know, we're always having the conversation about staffing and other needs. Um, we have also discussed some of the other issues that have come to the board, uh, the investment policy and, and other things. But ultimately, I know when we were talking about stuff, um, as we moved through the process while I was on the board, it was, um, you know, leadership issues and I think Supervisor Shabatier hit it on the head of, um, sometimes being told what we want, you know, what they, they think we need to hear, or she is letting us know and answering those questions, but not much, much action being taken ultimately. Um, so I know that I was on part of that committee, uh, for a while. Uh, we had some conversations. We brought some stuff to the board um, that were changed at, at the last minute, um, in consideration. So I do think this is a worthy topic, but I do think there is an opportunity to, uh, to give time to rebut, um, some of the stuff that was brought up today, uh, that, um, Barbara was not prepared for. But, uh, ultimately it is, um, a conversation that needs to be had from my point of view and moving on the performance of the tax collector's office. And, you know, ultimately, uh, hopefully we put all our cards on the table and move forward in a direction that's going to benefit our constituents in Lake County. So, um, Supervisor Shabatier?
And, and I do not mind respectfully giving her the time to respond. I, I just, uh, ask, and I know it will sound strange that she be the one to respond and not anyone else.
Yeah. Thank you, supervisor. Okay, with that, I know this, with this item that was put on here, I, I know that, uh, it was asked me to approve a vote of, uh, no confidence for the treasurer tax collector. Um, at this time, we'll ask if there is going to be a delay or push for time for answer that, um, we kind of work that out right now or, uh, action will be taken at this time, uh, by a motion. So any suggestions?
Well, Mr. Chair, your next agenda is September 15th. If you wish Ms. Ringan to come back then?
I'll ask the board, uh, what their thoughts are. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I think that's a good timeframe.
Uh, what's the, trying to get a consensus on the board here?
I, I agree with that, Dave.
That works.
Any other board members?
Hi, this, this is Barbara. Could I make one comment? We're just closing the, um, doing the extension for the secured role right now. Um, I would like an additional week. Um, the 22nd would, um, be a little bit better for my schedule considering, considering the timeframe we're in right now.
Okay, Barbara, thank you for that request. I'm looking for consensus on either September 15th or the 22nd. I don't know if anybody's view has changed on when to come back with the response from Barbara.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Brown. With the 22nd?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Scott? Crandall? Yes, from Supervisor Scott. I see her shaking her head.
Supervisor Sabatier is okay with that. I, I would be too.
So then, Mr. Chair, would we be just continuing this, repeating this agenda item as written with response from Ms. Ringan, or do you wish it to be agendized differently?
No, I think at this point, I think it would be a continuation of what we're doing. She asked to have a response to what was read today. So I think we would do a continuation at this point. Obviously, I'll look for confirmation from that from Supervisor Sabatier. If he feels like it needs to be different, we can, but with the confirmation, just a continuation of what was asked today, so as a response, some of the other stuff that had come up from Supervisor Sabatier that Barbara didn't have a chance to respond to, and then at that point, we can finish this item.
I, I agree to continue the item as is and obtain a response from her at the following meeting.
Okay, and it, you know, I, I will agree with the 22nd, but it is the 22nd. We'll move through that and we will get it agendized and this is a very important conversation. It was brought by Supervisor Sabatier. And we'll get this thing moving forward on the 22nd.
Mr. Chair, if you'll give me just a moment to check in with our Assistant Clerk at the Board, Johanna, I just want to make sure there are not other huge agenda items scheduled for that day, Johanna. Are there any major conflicts the date of the 22nd to reschedule this? And assuming not, can you suggest a time?
Um, so all we have for now is the Employee Service Awards and unnamed road hearing at 11:00. So anything past 11:00, I don't think the road hearing should take too long.
And shall we do 11:15 again like we did today? Does that work?
That works for the schedule, yes.
Okay. All right, we'll continue this item to 11:15 a.m. on September 22nd. So at this time, we'll move on with our agenda and what I, what I would like to do is do a lunch break. At this point, if we could go until say, let's do a 45-minute lunch break. We'd put us back about 1:17. Is everybody okay with a 45-minute lunch break or looking for an hour? All right, looks like, you know, 45 minutes is good.
45 is good for me.
Okay, let's do a 45-minute lunch break and that will put us back here at just about 1:20.
1:20 it is.
Yeah, okay, we'll take a lunch break and we'll finish out our agenda items.
See you then.
It's 1:20. So we're going to go ahead and reconvene our September 1st 2020 Lake County Board of Supervisors meeting at 1:20. We have still some items to go on the agenda here. So welcome back constituents and Lake County residents who are on the, on here and also our any county staff that's watching. So we're going to go ahead and move through our agenda. We are going to start with item 7.2, Consideration of a Public Release of Tax Defaulted Property GIS Application.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce Patrick Sullivan, who's going to demonstrate for you. And Jake, I need to ask if you will enable Patrick to be able to share his screen. Patrick, are we going to be looking at your computer screen? Is that how this is going to work?
Good afternoon. Yes, I can present it through my screen with the shared screen and I can basically drive the application.
Okay, Jake should be giving you that ability here momentarily.
Yep, I gave him co-host. He's good to go.
So Patrick, go ahead with opening remarks if you would like, or if you want to just go straight to the screen, whichever you prefer.
Okay, I will go ahead and get the screen enabled and then I can give my remarks. I just want to make sure that this is working correctly. And that is visible.
Yes.
Okay. So this is the GIS application that's been developed with the great assistance of the IT department. First, I really want to thank Shane French, Kathy Locatos and Longsarp and especially Kathy, because a lot more time ended up going into this than we initially anticipated. The goal of this project was to create a visual of where the tax defaulted properties in the county were so that interested parties would be able to identify them. And hopefully, whether it was cities, agencies, member of the public, realtors, with this mapping, you'd be able to see where it was in relation to various points of interest and also neighboring properties. The other issue that arose while we were doing this was that it became pretty clear to analyze the minimum bid to understand what a property would truly cost if it were to go to auction. It would be necessary to do some additional research. The reporting available right now through Megabyte and the reports that are generated, they just reflect the base tax that's owed. You can view the penalties, but it doesn't account for the interest that's developed over the years. And once a property has been delinquent for five years, becomes eligible for auction, at that point, you start to see that the interest amount essentially double. So as these properties go and become progressively older, that total balance is rising. And we needed a way to tie that in so that if someone was looking at a property, you'd be able to see what that actual balance owed was. So would you go, Chair Simon, would you like me to demonstrate the product now or do you, are there further questions?
I think the only question is obviously, does this thing show the whole all of Lake County here or is that your?
Yes. It does show the whole county. It's just, it's very difficult until you zoom in on a particular area to visualize what's in there. When it's, when you're zoomed out far enough to view the whole county, you really can't see.
Okay.
So there's a few other points that I want to make actually before I really get started. Kathy and IT worked to generate the properties that would appear in here. And properties that were in active payment plans were excluded. Properties that are marked as being in active bankruptcy. There's also State Board of Equalization generated bills. Tried to remove the properties that were clearly not eligible for auction. There are some other difficult ones though. There are properties that appear as being delinquent on this, even though they're really not delinquent eligible for auction. A lot of these are because they're government properties. They could be federal, state, local. They can be tribally owned land when it moved into trust. It's that the year that government entity acquired it, there's a tax bill that wasn't fully satisfied or a tax bill that should have been canceled and never was. So those will require additional research. But that's why right now on this map, you'll see that on a lot of government or tribal land. So that's something to essentially ignore for the moment. All right, so when you zoom in on a property, I can just go in here. This is on the North Shore in Nice. There's, can everyone see this all right or do you want me to zoom in further?
May have to go in a little bit further, but at least you can see the blue, you know, the blue dots that are there.
Okay.
I don't know what it looks like in the boardroom, so I'd like to hear from Supervisor Sabatier.
We see it just fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So what you'll see here, this layering that was created by IT, it shows the years in default. So as you go block by block, you can look at these properties and they're color coded. So you can see properties that are six to 10 years, 11 to 20 and more than 20. And it goes yellow, orange, red. So that can help give a quick visualization of what you're looking at here. When you click on a property, let's say you want to click on this one and see some more details. You can get the actual address. You can get the unpaid taxes that are due. You can get the number of years that it's been in default. So in this case, it's 29 years. When you look at the unpaid taxes due, it shows $11,592.20. So that's reflecting all of those costs I was talking about, the taxes, penalties, costs, fees, interest. Everything rolled into one number. And normally, the only way you would see that number is if you were actually in the tax collection software, the Megabyte program. You have to go through a few screens and you click on this particular button. It generates that figure. But what IT was able to explain is that Megabyte isn't storing that information. It basically is running that formula for a moment in time and then it disappears when you leave the screen. So what we've essentially done here is extracted that information and assigned it to all these parcels. So now if you look at it, you can tell that parcel costs $11,500. This one is $5,004. This one, neighboring parcel identical, is also $5,004. So you can start to get an idea of what the cost would be. Other sort of key function here is that when you looked on this, you could see the last previous tax sale was $19.98. That's at least the last known one. We've been going through a lot of records, trying to identify all of the previous sales in which parcels were offered. So that's not yet complete, but we're into, let's see, the early 90s, late 80s right now. But what you can also see is instead of just viewing the years in default, you can look at what's previously been offered at a tax sale. So by outlining that, you can see that darker blue means we know it has previously been offered. That lighter blue indicates that it has not previously been offered. That can be important, especially if agencies or other districts are looking at it. Sometimes nonprofits, because once a property has been offered in the past, it opens up more, more options for sales beyond just the sort of more standard auctioning. There's agreement sales that the county could consider doing. And also the bids can be adjusted. So understanding the, the auction history for each parcel kind of gives an indication of how many options and how much flexibility the county might have. I think those would be the main points of this. When you look at a property as well, IT added a tool where you can select a block of properties or one, whatever you're interested in. If you want to select those, you just drag, highlight it. Now over in this field, you can export that to an Excel file which will then generate. And I don't know if this is visible on the screen. I hope it is.
Yeah.
Details associated with that property. They've excluded the name. There's some things that we can't release in this manner. But it does give the address. It gives a little bit more of a breakdown. For instance, you can see the amount of what the first delinquent tax bill was. And then you can see what the total owed now is with all, all costs considered. So this could be helpful for someone when they're really trying to get a feel for what this property is and what the past history of it was. And hopefully without overwhelming the party with more info than they need. So at this point, I think those are the primary aspects of this. If the board had any questions, I'm, I can answer them.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, no, I, I've been tagging along with Patrick as he's been working on this. Originally, this was to be specific to an area of Lake County, but it was obvious that this was something we needed for the entire county. I love the transparency. I love the availability because the idea is if, if I don't get ahead of Patrick, I don't mean to steal your thunder, but the idea is to make this public so that the public can access it through our website, just like they could any other GIS and gain this information on their own. And one of my questions, and it's possibly a comment because it's pretty obvious to me, is I should be able to highlight the entire city of Clear Lake if I wanted to and get that same report that you just said. That way, we can always look at from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, from district to district and see how all that comes together. Am I correct on that?
Yes, you should be able to. However, this is where IT might need to jump in if they're on the line. To, to do a drag selection just within the city limits could be somewhat complicated.
Just because it's not a square?
Yeah, because it's not, it doesn't want to let me grab it in that way. Trying to see if there's another option. Yeah. At least at this point, I'm seeing it as a square. There may be a way to do that. And I don't know if anyone from IT is on the line. Maybe they could help.
And I think that's, I mean, it doesn't need to be an exact, specific area, but I think the fact that I can do multiple squares and I can do multiple, I can cover one whole area, even if it's not perfectly square. Just the fact that it's so simple to create an Excel spreadsheet with all that information and have it be, is this connected live or is it connected LNA on a specific date?
So this data is based off a moment in time. It's how things looked in July of 2020. And that was necessary because for IT to grab that data and do all the calculations, we, we sort of have to pick something. In the future, we can update this, but doing a live update would probably be quite difficult to do.
Okay. I love it. And I see Supervisor Scott's hand is up in case Chair Simon can't see it.
Thank you very much. I don't know how.
Okay, so my question would be, the screen that you zoomed into, those look like unimproved parcels. Am I correct? With no house on it?
Let me zoom in here and I can probably break it down a little bit better. This should allow you to see.
Patrick, could you, could you change, change your view to Lakeport just for the heck of it, since Supervisor Scott had this question? And then perhaps it'll look a little more familiar to her?
Yeah, and I can't say a lot of our land is, that's eligible for auction, is unimproved.
So if there was, so if there was a house on it, then it would give more detail about the home that's on it?
Right now, this does not offer that level of detail. We, we kept it more constrained to what is related to the actual tax default. The regular county GIS may offer that detail and I'm not sure what could be worked into this. They only included a few specific things for this project right now, but I know that could always be changed if your board desired it.
Thank you.
And so Patrick, it's intended that this would be accessible to any member of the public from where on the county website? What are you thinking? Or is it already there?
Right now, it's not available on, on the website. This would just be made available through the regular county GIS page. And it would be treated like the other items that are up there.
Chairman Simon, would it be helpful if Patrick took you on a little tour of your district there? You know, he showed a little
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
A little bit of Clear Lake and Lakeport.
I think that's what he meant when he said is they show all of Lake County.
Yeah, so I'll try not to zoom out too much so that board members can see. This would be an example up here too of tribal lands that shows as being in default. And that's just because there's that one bill. Usually that needs to be fixed. That's Big Valley. So just like the other government owned land, tribally owned land, those will ultimately need to be fixed. And this project has identified a lot of things that need to be fixed. So that's kind of an additional helpful point for the future. So that's leaving Kelseyville.
So I have a question then, just, are we thinking long term that this would just turn into kind of on the parcel viewer and stuff like that? Just another overlaid map that's on that? I mean, that's the ultimate thought on this for the, you know, as we move forward. It'd be great. I think it is great technology. Any information we can get out on these is excellent. I like what I'm looking at. But I just see it as another overlay map like you can do on the GIS, the parcel map viewer. You can select different ones. So is, is that just a thought or is that conversation already been had looking for long term? Or it's all kind of in one spot?
I believe that can happen, but again, that's probably a question I would direct to IT. That's a little more specific than I got in this. Right now, it would be, it would be a separate link.
Okay.
So this is Middletown. There's not a lot of activity there. If you go towards, for instance, Hidden Valley Lake.
Hidden Valley Lake, Patrick.
Hidden Valley Lake area, we can zoom in and start looking at different streets there.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
So you're gonna see more activity in Hidden Valley Lake, and that gives you an idea of what the age of defaults are. I mean, it looks like a lot of these may be vacant lots, and you would always need to do more research.
Yeah, and I think some of those may be changing also. You know, the water moratorium was lifted down there, and probably has some of these lots in that situation. But yeah, I appreciate that look at everything.
Yeah.
If you filter that by whether or not they were previously offered at tax sale, could you do that?
Yes, so now you can see.
A lot of them were then, uh-huh. But not likely a sale during the years of that water moratorium.
Yeah.
So the next question on the water moratorium, since it's been lifted, can they get, pull permits and build without paying back their taxes, or will that have to be done before they get the permits to continue to build?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that, obviously, but the actual moratorium was only from 2014 till now, I think, the last six years. If I'm wrong on that, I most likely will be corrected by someone, but I think that was the timeframe on the moratorium. So not a long length of time.
So now, we're back over Clear Lake and
Yep.
the density of these properties.
Yeah, this is an area of higher concentration, especially in the southern part of Clear Lake and the avenues. And that gives you the map of what's been auctioned and previously not. Another area I can show on the North Shore, and this is Supervisor Crandall's district.
Can you zoom in and just click on one of the blue ones there? Just pick a random one on the North Shore, so we can look at it again.
Okay, this is an unusual parcel.
That's all right.
This isn't Clear Lake Park, I believe.
It looks like Windflower Point.
So, and this can bring up other things, too, that I've seen sometimes when there's an unusually shaped parcel. I've just spot-checked a few. It may be land that's owned by, for instance, an HOA or a community organization that provides, you know, common access to the lake or a waterway. And sometimes that bill stops being paid, and it might be going to someone perhaps that doesn't live there anymore, or whoever used to pay it is no longer involved. So I have noticed some things like that as well. In Lucerne, these are some of the other areas that you see that really high concentration. This is on the North Shore, where we start to get into the paper subdivisions.
Yeah.
So you can get a feel for what the delinquency levels are, and how much the bills have gone up, because most of these lots have a very low assessed value. But because they've been delinquent so long, you see these higher numbers where it's two, three, four thousand dollars.
And thirty-three years in default.
Sometimes they're vacant lots that may have had initial tax bill that's, let's say, three thousand, but because of all the interests and penalties, it's up to ten or twelve thousand.
And I'm not sure if this was made apparent, but this is due to the conversations and ideas that were thrown around in the Treasurer, Tax Collector, Ad Hoc Committee that Patrick engaged with IT to be able to come up with this GIS system. And I think it's a fabulous way for us to be able to keep track and make this public.
Yes.
I agree with that.
I think, too, there has been a lot of folks from the North Shore asking, because a lot of people know that in District Three, there's a lot of properties that fall under default, and they wanted to be able to see the different properties. That way, they could promote them for sale, or whatever the case may be. And so this provides that. Thank you, Patrick, for making it happen.
Mr. Chair, could I ask another question?
Yes, go ahead, Carol.
Patrick, let's just say you're somebody that is an investor and you're looking to buy some properties and you want to know what the history of these properties are, and so you look them up here. What can you then do to further your interests? I mean, would you write a letter to the address and hope it gets to the property owner to express that you're interested in it? Or what might you do with this information if you're a potential investor or developer?
Well, I think the first step on this one, and me need to add a few disclaimers, because this data is always going to be behind. Probably first, you'd want to reach out to the county. If there were some lots you were interested in, confirm that information. Do a quick check, make sure that what's in there is still accurate. Let's say that hasn't been paid off, or if there's some other factor. Some of these properties have other factors that we could advise on. There have been parcel splits where bills haven't accounted correctly. There's some records that are in paper books on some of the older properties that might require some extra research. But once you clear past that, you have that rough idea of the cost, you could go into the Recorder's Index, get more information that way on the past ownership records. This software does give you the mailing address, so I suppose you could send that letter directly to the owner, although you aren't publishing the owner's name. Otherwise, I guess at that point, you would potentially be engaging with a Realtor or anyone else if you're interested in buying it directly. If you were hoping to see it on a tax auction, or make an arrangement for some other type of sale, the Tax Collector's Office would probably be the first point of contact.
Thank you, Patrick.
Supervisor Scotty?
Yeah, I have a question on that, because that is a good question, because the idea is if people aren't able to pay for their properties, we're looking for investors who might be able to do so and take over those properties and make them active properties. And so, when you go to the checkbox of previously offered at tax sale, wouldn't you then, if you see ones that are bright blue, be able to call up the Tax Collector's Office and say, "I would like to look into direct sales," where there might be a sealed bid possibility and that an individual might push for those things to occur? Would that be a possibility, or do they have to go through us to bring it up? How does that process begin? Because I know I could begin it by bringing it up and working with admin and Tax Collector and whoever else to make it happen. But as an individual, what would be their process, say, "Hey, that property's already been offered. Maybe I can offer a sealed bid, sealed, yeah, sealed bid to the county, and if it's approved, then I get a direct sale of that property to me."
I believe the Tax Collector's Office would be the appropriate first step. Whatever sales type it may be, in the end, it does have to have board approval, whether it's initial or final authorization, is my understanding. So I believe the Tax Collector's Office would be still the appropriate first step in understanding your options in terms of sale. But then, there may be other departments involved if you wish to perform more research. The alternative would always be to try to purchase it from the owner directly and pay off that tax debt, in which case you wouldn't necessarily have to go through the county.
And Supervisor Barbara Ringan is in the room, if she had anything to add.
Barbara, I know you may be in the room. I don't know if you have any comments.
Jake, if you can send her an unmute request.
Doesn't look like she has a audio device connected.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Scotty.
Yeah, my last question. With all of this data that you have collected and found, I was wondering if you had a total amount, updated total amount with this new research of what taxes and fees and everything is due to the county?
Yes, I can provide some information on that. This data is looking at just what is eligible for auction or should be. So the total associated with that here is twenty point three million dollars. There are some factors that would ultimately increase that, and there are some that would lower it. If you look at the last power to sell list, I believe, from the Tax Collector's Office, which would be the more conservative end of which parcels are truly eligible, I think that comes out to nineteen point nine million. There are some other lists in here, like the government properties I brought up where a tax bill should be canceled, most likely. There are some other issues with bills being assigned correctly to parcels. There's some documentation that's in paper that's not loaded into Megabyte that can change that balance. But I think, either way, when we checked at those couple of different methods, essentially twenty million, give or take, lower it, is where it would come in.
And just to clarify also, it's only for those that are past the eligibility date, meaning not any of the properties that are delinquent for less than five years.
Twenty point nine million? That's right. It's ignoring properties that are under five years in terms of delinquency. It's also ignoring delinquent properties that are marked as being in active bankruptcy. They could fall out of that bankruptcy, or may have. If you're in an active payment plan, you're not included. So there are other properties out there that are delinquent, actually past that five-year mark, that aren't on here at the moment. And in the future, as updates were done and all these various lists are cleaned up, properties should sort of appear and fall off this list as we go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Patrick, you can go ahead and take the screen share down. Thank you. All right, any more questions from the board? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it.
The Treasurer, Tax Collector does now have audio, I'm told, if you want her to comment.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that information. Barbara, I don't know if you have any comments?
Um, I do, thank you. I do agree, I think this definitely will be a useful tool. Now, it's kind of still a work in progress, but eventually, I think it will be very helpful in the overall process of tax sales and offering these parcels for sale. There were some comments, I'm trying to remember all of them, just in the tax sale process. One is, we do not have the ability to sell any properties directly to a taxpayer without going through a public auction. So as an example, a sealed bid sale, those are for properties that are not usable. They're too small to build, or maybe too steep, or one option or the other. And those properties could only be sold in a sealed bid sale to contiguous property owners. And then, also, an agreement sale. I might have heard incorrectly, but I believe it was stated that the property has to be offered for sale prior and no bid received in order to be eligible for an agreement sale. And what would qualify a parcel for agreement sale? Basically, they have a power to sell. So as long as you're a qualified taxing agency or nonprofit, you could put in an application for a property through an agreement sale process. Parcels that have been offered for sale in the past, it's important to know and they don't sell. The main reason for that, then, is to, you can lower the minimum bid at the next auction. If, as an example, there's a nuisance abatement that makes the tax due much higher than the market value, then you can reduce that minimum bid to encourage bidding on that property. But I do think eventually, this will be a useful tool. I do have some concerns being released to the public without having those other items addressed, those government acquisitions and maybe those parcels that just have fire fees only on them. Having those removed first, but I do think this will eventually be definitely a useful tool in the whole process.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Okay, any more comments or questions from the board? All right, here are none. We'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. I don't see any hands up at this point, Jake, so if you could just open the room.
All right, I'll open the room up here. I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom floor. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Jake, go ahead and close it and bring it back.
All right.
Bring it back to board chambers. Do we have anybody in chambers that would like to make a comment?
There are no public comments here in the chamber.
Okay. Thank you very much. Bring it back to the board. And this was just information-only, correct? Let me double-check that.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I agree with you that I think this was mainly informational-only, but I would like to support staff with continuing, with my expression, to continue on this matter and continue to develop it further to make sure that it's as accurate as can be. I like the idea of adding a disclaimer, because what you see today may not be exactly what's happening, because it's a day-in-time information, and maybe even putting the day-in-time that this information came from, so that the public is aware that they're looking at information that might be a week old, a month old, a year old, whatever that timeframe might be. But I really appreciate the efforts made in this project, and I'd like to make sure that staff knows that we support them and we want them to continue. So I'm looking for that consensus.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm in support. This seems like a good program. I think ultimately, too, designing this, I think there's other applications that could be moving in this direction for different things that we're looking at in the county. Just one, I think, is the vegetation abatement stuff that we have going to. So anyway, yeah, I support it. Can we get a consensus to the board?
Oh, yeah. I'm definitely consensus with it. Like I said earlier, you know, there's a lot of folks that already understand the dynamic of property owners that aren't intending to their land or properties. There's people plotting on it. There's people that, you know, there's, like you said, vegetation abatement issues, but also trash and parked cars and things of that nature. So if people can get a chance to look at this and have an opportunity to kind of be prepared for an auction, then this helps a lot.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for the presentation and the hard work. Thank you for bringing this to Board Ad Hoc Committee. And IT, as always, thank you very much for putting this together, everyone who did it. So, all right, we're gonna move to our next item. We're gonna move to item seven point five. Consideration of a purchase of one 2020 Chevy Tahoe police pursuit vehicle from Matt Mazze Chevrolet in the amount of forty-two thousand nine eighty from the Sheriff Pursuit Replacement Budget Unit 2217, object code six-two-point-seven-two. And B, waiving the county purchasing ordinance, forty-one-point-three-B, allowing ten percent local vendor preference. And C, authorize the sheriff to issue a purchase order. So thank you very much for being patient. Sheriff Martin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is exactly as described. It's a, for consideration of a purchase of a 2020 Chevy Tahoe police pursuit vehicle, this vehicle is going to be assigned to one of my members of command staff. There are, for these sport utility vehicles, for police pursuit vehicles, generally, it's between Ford and Chevy Tahoe. The Fords tend to be a little bit cheaper. However, the Chevy Tahoe comes with a four-wheel-drive package. It's been our intent to fleet, have a fleet that's a mix of both all-wheel-drive and four-wheel-drive. As we experienced during these last rounds of fires, our four-wheel-drive vehicles come in quite handy when we have to get to remote locations, not only during fires but other investigations. The person that this will be assigned to is actually our SWAT commander. He carries a great deal of regular, everyday patrol equipment as well as SWAT gear. The interior of the Chevy Tahoe is significantly larger in space, more roomier than the Ford Explorers, and he also happens to be six foot five. Cramming into a smaller car is challenging. And as far as the waiving, I'm not sure if we need to ask for the waiving of the county purchasing ordinance. The price difference between the Matt Mazze bid and the lowest bid, with Matt Mazze being the lowest bidder, is well under the ten percent. So I'm not sure if that needs to be in there or not, but if that needs to be waived, then I'd ask for that as well.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff Martin. Any questions from the board, Supervisor Scotty?
I'm really glad that you described the person driving this, because I really was wondering why it wasn't a Prius. I'm really glad that you described the person driving this because I really was wondering why it wasn't a Prius. But overall, I do appreciate it. When I first saw the the subject line for this, I was looking around for the bids and obviously they're right there. You had the sealed bids and then have them listed further on down. So I appreciate you going through the steps to get this to us, and I believe that this all comes from the per mile used by your other vehicles gets placed into the budget you're using. And I think that is a great way to make sure that we can continue to have good, reliable vehicles on the road for our law enforcement. So looking forward to approve this.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or from the board and comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and open it up to public for public comment. I do not see any hands up at this point, Jake, so if you could just open the room.
All right, I will open up the room here. I have sent a unmute request to the Zoom room. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, we'll go ahead and close it back up. Check with the board chambers. Anyone with public comment at this point? No. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase of one twenty twenty Chevy Tahoe Police Pursuit Vehicle from Matt Mazze Chevrolet in the amount of forty two thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and fifty six cents from the Sheriff Pursuit Replacement Budget Unit twenty two seventeen, and authorize the sheriff to issue a purchase order. Oh, sorry, object code sixty two point seven, two from that budget unit, and authorize the sheriff to issue a purchase order.
Okay. I know we kind of all rolled rolled it into one there. Anita, we're good of the way the motion was made? Just double checking.
Yes, sir, it's it's fine. It sounds as if from what the sheriff was telling your board that the waiver isn't necessary, so omitting that, it should be fine.
Okay, just want to double check. So Johanna, there's been a motion, a motion and a second. Please call for the roll call vote.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Supervisor Brown, I think he's returned this afternoon.
Okay, and then Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Sheriff Martin. Okay, we'll return to item seven point three, consideration and recommendation to rescind the local person, the Lake County Personnel Rules, eleven, section eleven twenty eight, County Employee Scholarship to Marymount, California, University of Professional Growth and the Educational Development. And B, consideration of recommendation to add a new section to Lake County Personnel Rules, section eleven twenty eight, Disaster Service Work Policy. Admin Office and Human Resources, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. HR Director Pam Samick is going to present this with me, Jake, if you can make sure she has the ability to unmute, but I'll start. Your board is probably aware that quite a few years back, the county developed a special policy to encourage Lake County employees to enroll in the old Marymount College when it was at Lucerne Castle. But as you also well know, Marymount College left us quite some time ago under unusual circumstances. And the old policy has been hanging around ever since. It was never rescinded. And so what we're proposing today is that we go ahead and rescind that policy and replace that same section with a policy that we are in need of. And before you consider rescinding that, I wanted to call to the attention of your board that we do have another similar policy that would remain in place for employee professional growth and development. So we have in existence a policy that's been around even longer than the Marymount policy. It's attached to your packet. It's the longstanding reimbursement program for professional growth and development of employees. It has many similarities to the Marymount policy. It's just not specific to a particular institution. So that will remain in place even if you opt today to rescind the Marymount policy. Although with that said, you know, we don't see a tremendous amount of use of that policy. For self-funded departments, they have the ability to budget for funds to cover use of this policy. And for general fund departments, HR historically has budgeted a very modest amount of funds for that policy. But the number of requests we get for this are few and far between, maybe one every year or two or so countywide. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Pam Samick, who's going to talk about the development of the Disaster Service Worker Policy that we're proposing replace the Marymount Policy and why we need it, and assuming you approve it, what we will do next.
Good afternoon, board. The proposed new Disaster Service Worker Policy is intended to raise awareness and assist with a more structured training for county employees regarding their duty to serve local disasters. Up till now, they've received a brief introduction during new hire orientation. However, departments that have very little responsibility for disaster service duty are left unaware of this process. And this year, with the ongoing pandemic expected to last for an unknown duration and being compounded by the wildfires, it's become very critical that we make sure all employees are fully informed about their duty to serve as disaster service workers. In anticipation of this policy being brought to your board for consideration, HR worked with the Office of Emergency Services to develop a presentation, training materials, and added a new segment to be added to our new hire orientation to be delivered by the OES department. This draft has been compiled from examples used by other counties and adapted for our use here in Lake County. It's been reviewed by the department heads, who have all expressed a desire to have more clear DSW information for our county employees. Once approved, HR will coordinate with OES to add this training to new hire orientation, post it on the internet, and email the new policy, training materials, and videos to all employees. In addition, HR will implement a program and tracking to comply with the FEMA National Incident Management System Training Requirement.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Any questions from board members? Supervisor Sabatier?
Other than just a few typos here or there, I'm wondering. So I get it that it's a state law that all employees are disaster service workers. Is that noted and signed when a new employee is hired? Wondering if that is something that they're absolutely one hundred percent aware of as they get into the job.
Well, Mr. Supervisor, they do sign a form, but whether they're fully aware is why we're bringing this policy to you, you know, to raise the awareness, because they sign that form along with a lot of other forms. They sign new employee orientation.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I think as long as it's in the if they forget, that's 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 one thing. But if they sign, they don't sign it, that would be a whole other thing. So I appreciate just the knowledge that there is a form to sign at the beginning. And then if we forget things, we forget things. But yes, this is a good way to keep people reminded of the extra task that they might need to take on in case of an emergency that occurs.
I did think Pam, were you going to make a comment also?
Carol answered that question.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to just talk over you, Pam. Sorry about that.
Not at all.
All right. Okay, are there any more questions from the board? All right, seeing no more questions or comments from the board at this point, we're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Jake, I don't see any hands up, so if you could please open the room.
All right, I'll open up the Zoom room. I've sent a unmute request out to the floor. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, seeing none. We'll come back. Bring it back, or we'll close the virtual room and is there any comment in the chambers? I don't think we have anybody in the chambers, but I will ask. Supervisor Sabatier?
Nobody left in the board chambers. We scared them off.
Wanted to confirm. All right, we'll go ahead and close the comment, public comment, bring back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve rescission of the Lake County Personnel Rules, section eleven twenty eight, County Employee Scholarship to Marymount, California, University for Professional Growth and Educational Development.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion is second. Johanna, you do roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a second part. Go ahead and entertain a motion in part B.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve addition of a new section to Lake County Personnel Rules, section eleven twenty eight, Disaster Service Worker Policy.
Second.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes all our items. We will go to our seven point one item. Weekend calendars, we'll start with Supervisor Sabatier.
I'm going to make a quick comment and then I'll go over my calendar, which will be brief. While I'm not upset about this, I think we need to always hold in our minds why we do the things that we do, and mainly most of the things that we do is for the public. And so I know that last, I don't know if it was Thursday or Friday, I think it was Thursday, we had a virtual hall meeting. And at the beginning of that meeting, we already knew that evacuation orders were going to be decreased, and we waited till the end of the meeting. And I think that most people wanted one thing and one thing only, and that was to find out about the change in evacuation orders. And while it's nice to have a big surprise, I think it's also nice to give the people exactly what they want, especially after waiting eight days of not being able to go back home for some that chose to leave or chose to listen to the mandate to leave. So I just wanted to put that out there because I think we need to be cognizant of those things and make sure to give out that information as soon as we have it rather than waiting for the right moment for us because it's not the right moment for them. Anyways, on Thursday, I'll be in the morning EOC, CSAT call in the evening. In fact, I actually have a CSAT call this evening just for the fires, but we're pretty much almost out of that situation here. Clear Lake City Council meeting happening at six PM on Thursday as well. I'll join them through Zoom. I will keep trying again, and hopefully this week I'll be able to make it to the CC4C meeting. I was able to help them out a little bit with some of the issues happening at one of our local businesses who was having to pay a lot more money to recycle some material, and CC4C was able to provide some assistance with them. So that was a good connection. And then the following week, we are on Labor Day weekend. And so I don't know if there will be an EOC call on Monday or not. I'll let Ms. Hutchinson let us know if that will be changed or if that's still the same. And then it looks to us like we have a day off on the eighth. But I would like to ask if we are still in the midst of COVID nineteen. We've been meeting consistently through week five about COVID nineteen. Some of our stores are still experiencing restrictions because of COVID nineteen. And we discussed today gyms and restaurants and hair salons and whatnot. And I think that it would still do us do our constituents the right thing for us to at least have a COVID nineteen update on Tuesday, the eighth, with no other items for us to go through, just because they are still dealing with it, and so we should still be dealing with it and make sure that everybody is updated with how we're doing. That is my report.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Sabatier. Supervisor Scott?
Today, I'm hoping to attend the City of Lakeport's city meeting. Tomorrow, I have a meeting at nine o'clock discussing how they're going to do the stand down this year with the COVID regulations that we have. I have a eleven o'clock reprising meeting and a five PM meeting with the SEIU Union. On the third, I have a COC meeting in the afternoon. And then my weekend looks pretty open, and I agree, if we do have something that we need to be discussing concerning COVID, that maybe we should have just a short meeting in the afternoon to discuss that. I just want to let everybody know that our youth will be auctioning off their animals at the fair this weekend, and it's all going to be done virtually, so you can log on to our Lake County Fair website and be able to support our youth. I know a lot of them save their money for going to school and things like that. So if we can support our youth, I would suggest you go out on the Lake County Fair website page and see what you can do to help them. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Crandall? Still on mute, Supervisor Crandall? All right, I'll go ahead and move on with my report while we're starting to get that.
There we go. I had to, he had to unmute me. All right, so tomorrow I have a CSA meeting in Spring Valley. Thursday, there is the PGDPSPS meeting. Friday, I have a meeting in Upper Lake with a constituent about Clover Creek. Of course, Monday is Labor Day. Tuesday, Tuesday through Thursday is in essence going to be I'm just going to hold some meetings with constituents unless there's something else that comes up. Friday, next week, I know we have the Blue Collar Committee meeting. And then the Monday following, COVID recovery meeting, and then also the Middle Creek meeting, we will have that Monday, unless we do have the meeting like we're talking about for COVID on Tuesday. Otherwise, that's what I'll, that's what I'll have.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall. Okay, obviously, at this point, I have the board meeting today. No agenda review, but we'll be talking with Carol most likely the end of the day or tomorrow. Wednesday, don't have anything as far as meetings go. Thursday, I have the South, External South Deal Committee meeting, the morning EOC call on Friday. Don't have anything on the calendar as far as county meetings. We'll be talking with constituents as we move through wrapping up this fire. I know some of the warnings and other things are coming out and being downgraded. We'll continue working with constituents on that issue. As far as moving forward on any wrap-up meetings or anything with the fires, you know, I don't know if we're going to do something, but we'll let the community know if we are. But I just really want to thank all of our first responders, our OES here, the sheriff, and all of our county workers that stepped up during this disaster and public agencies, I mean, public nonprofits and those things. So I just it all came together in a head. We feared having the fires, but I really want to thank Dr. Pace, everyone, all of our county workers that helped put this thing together in coordination with CAL FIRE, you know, our local residents and everyone else to get through this trying times and early on in the season. So the message is, we talk about it always here in Lake County, be prepared. You know, if you haven't signed up for NICSIL, please do that. Pay attention. We're still early in the season here and added rolling blackouts this year. So please do everything you can to pay attention to the information coming out and just be prepared. But I do want to thank each and every one of our first responders and especially our county workers that stepped up that have been working for months during this COVID nineteen to help it go as smooth as possible, even though it's completely different than anything we've done. So I want to say thank you on that issue. And just, just to, you know, address Supervisor Sabatier, unless you had more information than I had, we had the meeting the other night, CAL FIRE and the sheriff make those calls on whether things are going to be lifted or not. And unless you found out before I did, I found out like everyone else. So I know we pushed hard as board of supervisors and everything to get people back in, but ultimately, you know, CAL FIRE makes those decisions. So and I thought they did a good job on that stuff. So I just wanted to make sure that is, you know, out there that try and get the information as soon as possible. And as a supervisor, trying to convey that information to our constituents is the main thing. And getting them home safely to home that is not, that is there is always the goal. On Monday, I have the EOC morning and the call and the recovery work group. And that kind of runs up the calendar for September. And um, that kind of runs out the calendar for September, uh, back here on the meeting for September eighth. So uh, thank you very much. And with that, we are going to go into closed session. And then give me one second here, I'll read those items in just one second. Okay, closed session items. Item eight point one, conference with labor negotiator. Uh, A, chief negotiator M. Long, county negotiators Carol Hutchison, Pam Samick, and B, employee organizations, LCD-DAA, LCD-SA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCS-EA, and LCSMA. Eight point two, conference with temporal, A, temporary representatives designated to county department heads regarding salary and benefits, and B, unrepresented management employees. Item eight point three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-point, five-point-nine, five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine, D-one, Center for Biological Diversity versus County of Lake. And item eight point four, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine, D-one, City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake, ETO. Okay, we're going to move into closed session at this time.